It is March 10th, 2016. Welcome to this special meeting of the Princeton Council. Madam Clerk, have we met all the noticing requirements for this meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
And please call the roll.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Ms. Crummiller?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Liverman?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
And Mayor Lampert?
Here. And now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, before we start tonight, I just want to give an overview of tonight's agenda. The main item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction for the designation of the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood as a historic district. But before we get to that, we have two reports. One is going to be on council putting together a working group on earned sick, and the other is just to get an update on what's happening with the bridge on 206. And before we get to those reports, I'd like to open it up for public comment, and I would like to invite anybody who would like to speak on any issue that's not the Witherspoon-Jackson designation. So if you want to speak about earned sick, or the 206 bridge, or any other issue, now is the time to do that. We're going to start with the folks who have signed up on the list, and then if we come to the end of that and you still want to speak, then we'll take people who haven't signed up. So we'll start with Mary Clerman, Daniel Harris, and then Jack Morrison. And we do have a lot of people who wish to speak tonight, so I would ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Mayor Clerman, Harris Road, hi. I just want to speak in favor of the earned sick leave. It seems really important for people who have part-time jobs and people who are working with children and with food service that they should have sick days. I think the amount of sick days that's been outlined for them, the way that they earn it, is very reasonable and not excessive, and I would like to see the town go with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Daniel Harris, 28 Dodds Lane. I am encouraged that Princeton council is seriously considering an ordinance concerning earned sick days. I am disturbed that Princeton has fallen so far behind in the national movement for social justice, and in New Jersey as well, with nine cities already having such ordinances in place. I urge you to move swiftly on this matter. You know that this ordinance would affect our most vulnerable and endangered people. You know that Princeton wants to justify its image as a place of fairness, equity, and health for human beings, as well as for the natural environment. You know that economic and social benefits to an ESD ordinance have been documented and are huge. We have all heard the voices of those in need, and we are aware, many of us, that we have never had to strain through our lives as hourly workers supporting families. Many of us have had white-collar jobs. For myself, as an academic, I can simply report that if I fell ill, I would call the English Department Secretary and ask her to post a note on my classroom doors saying that my class was canceled for that day. If I continued to be sick, I would ask an underpaid graduate student to take over her class. Occasionally, I would hold makeup classes at the end of the semester. Never was I docked any of my white-collar salary. I wasn't asked to bring a doctor's note, and I certainly wasn't threatened with job loss. It's time for Princeton to do the right thing. Thank you.
On behalf of the PMA, we felt it was important to be here tonight to shed some light on the subject of paid sick leave, because we've recently seen public comments in regard to our business community which are incorrect. In June of last year, when working families presented the idea of paid sick leave, many of us in this room, including you, some council members, looked at each other and said, "What businesses, nonprofits, and institutions do not offer benefits in our community?" The PMA formed an ad hoc committee of key stakeholders, representing a cross-section of our community. After several discussions, we came to the conclusion that we all supported the spirit of paid sick benefits, and we created a simple benefit survey, which we posted on our PMA website in August. We collected response data to the end of September and had 81 organizations respond, representing 15,000 employees, 13,500 full-time, 1,500 part-time. It was a good cross-section of our community. It involves, it had schools, churches, nonprofits, retail, food and beverage, and medical and professional offices. The survey showed that 99 percent of the full-time employees and 40 percent of the part-timers surveyed had paid time-off benefits. In November and early December, we reviewed our findings with you, the council and the mayor, in small informal meetings. We discussed the pros and cons as we saw them in the working family ordinance, and we all agreed to the creation of a task force in early 2016 to work on a document that would work for our local community. We strongly believe this is a local conversation, and that any ordinance should reflect the true needs of our local community, both employees and employers, because it is we who will be the managers and recipients of these benefits. On December 16th, New Brunswick introduced an past ordinance that addresses many of the concerns that we all shared with you. It's posted on their website. I didn't bring a copy, because I guess for public record, in order to discuss, it should be presented, but it is on their website. New Brunswick is a community very similar to ours, an ethnically and economically diverse town with large institutions, a university, a hospital, and an arts and transportation hub. The PMA supports the New Brunswick ordinance as a baseline for our conversations. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group I'd like to invite up, Jeff Nathanson, Dozier Hammond, and Mary Ellen Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor Lampert and members of the council. I'm Jeff Nathanson, Executive Director of the Arts Council of Princeton and a member of the Princeton Merchants Association Board of Directors. Small businesses and nonprofit sector believe, as do the officials and community-minded people in this room who are advocating for a paid sick leave ordinance, that we must treat our employees fairly. It's not only good for them and their families, but it is also good for business, as it helps to build employee loyalty and demonstrates good community citizenship. As the Princeton Merchants Association survey of local businesses proved, as Jack was referring to, the majority of businesses in our town already provide paid time-off benefits to the majority of workers. So we have demonstrated that we are supportive of the spirit of the ordinance, and we would be supportive of an ordinance that effectively serves the needs of this community. The proposed ordinance, as written however, would hurt small businesses like Jam &amp; Crepes, or Bent Spoon, or Small World, or many others that rely heavily on employing over 60 percent part-time employees who are students between 16 and 22 years of age, and work these jobs to earn spending money or income to supplement their lifestyles. This is also true for nonprofit organizations like the YMCA, the Arts Council of Princeton, and numerous others, who employ students as counselors and part-time workers during the summer, or other times during the year. Those who really need the money are working 20-plus hours, and they do deserve better benefits. Our issue is not with the idea of the ordinance, but with the lack of guidelines that address the reality of the local community, and which workers actually need the support of an ordinance. The proposed ordinance would also add undue burden administratively and financially to our small staffs, who would be tasked with tracking small increments and part-time accumulations. The Princeton merchants and nonprofits believe that we can collaborate on the development of an ordinance that addresses all of our concerns. We believe in the importance of getting the right text for Princeton and our constituents. We believe that the New Brunswick ordinance provides a very good model on which to base a Princeton ordinance. Small businesses, large businesses, nonprofits, or even the municipality for that matter, cannot afford an ordinance that creates confusion, provides a means for part-time temporary student employees to take advantage of a flawed system, or poses an inordinate amount of extra paperwork for staff. We urge the council to work with the PMA in a collaborative effort to create and adopt a paid sick leave ordinance that works for the benefit of us all. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ellen Moreno, and I represent, among other things, the New Jersey branch of the Progressive Democrats of America. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I believe in having an earned sick leave policy. I started promoting it with others that felt like we do, like I do, and many people in this audience, so long ago. It was when I first had my first picture on Facebook. I'm not a big Facebook person. I'm a very not-big Facebook person, but, you know, it was a couple of years. We did it in Newark, and that's my picture. My picture shows the folks in Newark. And there is no reason and no specialness about Princeton that means that we should have one different or less than other people have. We should have it, if anything, different and more, because we've got more here in Princeton. And if we want to live the beautiful life that we live, then we need to help the people that are making it possible for us. Thank you.
My name is Dozier Hammond, 87 Lee Avenue, and I'm speaking in support of the ordinance, or of the idea of paid sick leave for all employees in Princeton, even if they're students, even if they're part-timers. Of course, an easy way to not pay sick pay time is to take a full-time job and split it into two part-time jobs. All of a sudden, you've got nobody getting sick pay. I'm not saying that anybody would necessarily do that, but the temptation might be strong. I think we've seen it in some segments of our society up till now, and I think that we ought to have a paid sick day ordinance that covers all workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Jerome Montes, James Kilgore, and John Coney.
Hello, my name is Jerome Montes. I'm the Business Representative for the New Jersey Main Street Alliance, who are a coalition of more than 1,600 independently-owned businesses throughout New Jersey, including a number here in Princeton. First of all, I'm here in support of an earned sick day policy. A number of our members and supporters are here today, also in favor of an earned sick day policy. I would like to respond to some of the things that had been said earlier. We should keep in mind that when we are talking about most businesses in this area having a paid sick day policy, that does not cover a lot of part-time workers. And I, you know, I echo the sentiments of other people here who've said that Princeton deserves an ordinance that does, in fact, cover all workers. A good number of our businesses, of our business members are in places like Jersey City, in Newark, in Montclair, and they have strong earned sick day policies there. They can tell you that it's not only good for their workers, it has not only helped with retention and productivity, but it hasn't helped, it hasn't hurt their bottom line. If anything, it's likely helped it. So certainly Princeton should look very carefully at an earned sick day ordinance, and certainly the needs of this particular community should be paramount. But we think you can craft something that is universal and consistent with 10 other New Jersey municipalities that will provide the best protection to all employees, while at the same time actually helping the business community as a whole. The last thing I'd like to add is that we hope that in this process, you keep, you basically keep the conversation transparent. We realize that members of council have met informally and privately with various individuals and groups. You've actually met informally and privately with myself, and other, you know, other allies on this topic. However, if we are going to move into the area of a working group of something that is public, you know, we ask that everyone be allowed to see through the process, to basically be part of the process, and for the process to be public. We believe that that is the healthiest way to come up with an ordinance that will truly benefit all of Princeton. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Jim Kilgore, present publisher of the Princeton Packet. Just had a few comments. First time I testified before what was then Township Committee was when I was 21-years-old on the discharge of firearms ordinance. But anyway, I wanted to mention today, my concern is whether this body is the appropriate body to be involved in labor laws, and whether this being a well-meaning ordinance or potential ordinance, but isn't it better to work at the state level to lobby the governor, or even, there'll be a new governor? No, no, there'll be a new governor, and probably one more receptive in the future. But the purpose, I think, of the town council is to look out for the traditional things and other things to take care of the people within the community, with the mandate that people voted you all in office to take care of specific Princeton issues, and not go beyond into labor law, which could lead into minimum wage issues, exempt employees, and things like that. So philosophically, I agree with what you're trying to do, but I think this is the wrong venue. It does affect us in our business, on what it would cost us in some other ways, and some other small businesses. I echo what the head of the Arts Council has stated. So I do support the essence of what you're trying to do. I just don't know whether the local governing body should be involved in labor law issues, and that's a philosophical question that you all are grappling with, and we'll make the decision. But I did want to mention that impact. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is John Conley. I work with New Jersey Citizen Action and the New Jersey Time to Care Coalition. I'll do my best to keep my comments brief, because I've already listened to workers in this meeting of this council speak far more eloquently and far more bravely than I ever could on this issue. I think that frankly, it's a little strange to hear suddenly that students and part-time workers don't spread infectious diseases. I think it's a little strange to hear that Princeton is somehow both analogous to New Brunswick, which is a much different city, and also it's, and also its own unique thing, and also something that should be dependent on state-level regulation. And I think it's a little strange to frankly compare Princeton's reputation as a city that's always been very progressive, and has always been very open and democratic in its lawmaking process, to considerations for closed-door meetings between business interests and the council. That's really all I came to say today. Thank you for your time.
Next group I'd like to call up, Dan Preston, Kip Cherry, and John Heilner.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Preston on Moore Street. First of all, thank you, council and mayor, for taking this, the matter of earned sick leave up. I think, unlike the speaker a couple before me, I think it's great that this body is taking up a labor situation, especially one that affects those at the bottom of the income spectrum. I applaud you for that. If you could take up minimum wage, if state law allowed you to, I would want you to do that, too. Unfortunately, I think there's a legal impediment to that. But anyway, I do support the strongest possible measure, and in particular, applying to the part-time workers. I think as the PMAs on survey shows, it's the part-time workers who are actually most in need of this protection, since many full-time workers do enjoy it. I did just some quick back-of-the-envelope calculations on what this might cost a business. I actually have an envelope, and I wrote on the back of it, so that's the right device, I think. So as I understand it, the ordinance proposes one hour of sick leave per 30 hours worked, but up to a maximum of five days per year. So whatever 30 is 3 percent, but five days per year is only 2 percent of total labor time. But that's only if all employees use 100 percent of the hours they've earned. And a little bit of research that I've been able to do shows that not all employees use all their time. In fact, a third of employees typically don't use any of their sick time, and the other two-thirds who use some of it use about half of their sick time. So if you add up, figure out all those numbers, we're talking about maybe a 1 percent increase in labor costs. And I think other people have already acknowledged the improvements to productivity, morale, and so, you know, a 1 percent increase in cost for all the obvious benefits of the plan seem greatly worth it. But I guess the last thing I would mention, though, is of course, the actual labor cost is only one component. The cost of compliance might be something else. And of course, anything that can be done to make doing the right thing as smooth and easy as possible, I would certainly support, you know, people getting together and then sharing best practices on that, so that those who want to do the right thing are penalized, and those who are forced to do the right thing have a little bit of assistance along the way. Thank you very much.
My name is Kip Cherry, 24 Dempsey. I want to congratulate the council for taking a lead on this, and for essentially putting their money where their mouth is by providing earned sick leave to all employees in the town. I understand that there might be an exemption for lifeguards, something like that, but other than that, you've covered everybody, which I congratulate you on doing. I would like to offer a suggestion as an unworthy citizen, and that is, and this might sound rather obvious, but it would help a lot if your supervisors would identify backup staff for those who are out sick. I've had the occasion of being told I would have to come back because somebody was out sick, and nobody could perform the service, very simple service. So I would hope that you could cover that, and I think that would, we would have a better government for it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Heilner, Library Place. I'd really like to talk about the process going forward. As many people have said, well, first of all, many people have spoken far more eloquently than I can about the need for paid sick leave for the lowest-paid employees, and even those who work only 10 hours or 15 hours a week. So I'm not going to cover that. We know that many parties have talked with counselors. That's fine. Everybody has a right to lobby. I think now we're at the stage where an ordinance is going to be drafted, and I think you're going to get to this later, but I sort of hear through the grapevine that there'll be a working group, which I think is a great idea, of counselors to really look at specific wording in the ordinance. The ordinance will have many key provisions. This is not complicated, but there are a lot of things to consider. The numbers, the time periods, the part-time or hours worked, whether it's 20, 18, 15, whatever. And as we all know, the devil is in the details. As Jack Morrison said, only 40 percent of the part-timers in their survey are covered by earned sick leave. And I suspect that the 80, I think 80 or 81 companies or firms that were surveyed were not all of the very smallest ones. My suspicion is that of the very smallest ones, almost nobody gets earned sick time. So there are arguments for and against each piece, and I would just make a suggestion, may or may not make sense to you, that since both sides have presented their cases individually to counselors, maybe to a couple of counselors, that if you're going to have a working group to look at this, of two or three or four counselors, that you invite key members of both the proponents of earned sick leave and the opponents. Let them each present their arguments and their suggestions in a roundtable-type discussion, and let each one counter the other's suggestions if they don't think they make sense, or if they think the data is flawed. So we know that 10 other towns in New Jersey have already implemented an earned sick day ordinance. We know that four states have statewide earned sick leave. That ain't going to happen here, folks, now for a couple of years at least. So I would just really suggest that you find a way to get both sides talking to each other, talking with you who will be in this group, and then really get into those details, which are so important. And I just don't understand why Princeton is not more like the 10 towns that have implemented sort of the more common sick day ordinance than the one city, New Brunswick, that has not. Thank you.
Now I'd like to call up Craig Garcia, Anne Neumann, and Karen White. Well, Craig is coming up. Can I just see a show of hands for anybody else who wanted to speak as part of the regular public comment? Not part of, not Witherspoon-Jackson, but part of...
I'd like to speak about the income situation.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we'll get to you after we finish this.
Hi, Craig Garcia, 52 Birch Avenue, also New Jersey Working Families. First of all, I wanted to commend the council for passing the public-sector piece of the Earned Sick Days Initiative, which would cover pretty much every worker, except for a few seasonal employees. It's a great step forward, and I think everyone on the council deserves full commendment for that, so I thank you. I do want to express some concern over the proposal of the working group. First of all, I think the ordinance that has been passed in 10 other municipalities across the state, including Newark, Jersey City, Montclair, and right near us in Trenton, is a fair and, but strong ordinance that would cover all workers in town, and I think that's the most important thing. Even from the business community here tonight, we've heard that there are many part-time workers that are not covered, and it's those folks that, who are not covered with any basic benefits that we want to make sure are covered the most. We've seen, you know, and they, there was a suggestion about the New Brunswick ordinance, and I want to bring up a couple of concerns about the New Brunswick ordinance as a potential model. First of all, the New Brunswick ordinance carves out all workers that work less than 20 hours. A couple of weeks ago, we had a friend of mine, Luisa Stas, mother come to speak to the council. She works three jobs here in town. One of the jobs, she's a cafeteria worker, and she's represented by the union, 32BJ, and they have paid sick days. The other two jobs, again, she does not work 20 hours. She works food service and childcare. She does not have paid sick days in those jobs. The New Brunswick ordinance would exclude her from paid sick days. There, you know, is a narrative I heard that part-time workers are, you know, kids just trying to make a couple extra bucks to go to the amusement park, and that's not the reality of the American economy these days. We see more and more, all you have to do is to go to your local Dunkin' Donuts. We don't actually have a Dunkin' Donuts here in town, but, but we do. I don't go to it. I go to Small World. But we need an ordinance that covers all workers, and I want to also point to the concern about the process. I think if there is going to be a working group, I think that the process of all meetings of this working group should be public. Any negotiations about the contents of the ordinance is rightfully and under appropriate sunshine to, should take place in full public. It's not fair to all the workers and all the community members that have come out over the last 10 months, and especially over the last couple of weeks, asking for the same ordinance that we've seen in 10 other municipalities, to say that, you know, some meetings with business owners should be held in private. I'm glad to see members of the business community here tonight, but I think full transparency is what benefits this community. As a member of this community, I ask for full transparency in this working group, and I also ask for the strongest possible ordinance. I think the workers of Princeton deserve just as strong of an ordinance as we've seen in countless, in the 10 other municipalities across the state. Thank you.
Anne Neumann, Adams Street. I also wish to speak in favor of the ordinance, and I want to emphasize that it's an earned sick day ordinance. I was calculating on the back of my own envelope that if somebody worked a 30-hour week, they'd need to work seven weeks to get a seven-hour day of sick leave. That's not exactly a casual employee. I think businesses would be well-served by earning the loyalty of people like that, right? And I hope you will pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen White. I'm here on behalf of the New Jersey Time to Care Coalition, a group of organizations that have been working on paid leave in the municipalities and on the state and national level. I wanted to say that I think it's great, and I applaud you all for taking up the issue of paid leave and that, and it's great that Princeton wants to join the growing number of New Jersey municipalities that guarantee workers' right to earn paid sick time. But following the provisions of the ordinance adopted in New Brunswick would, among other things, needlessly discriminate against part-time workers and could force restaurant workers to bring their germs to work, putting the community at risk. Universal coverage is a bedrock value found in each of the other municipalities. Everybody gets sick. Everybody needs time to care for themselves and their sick family members. The data that was, came out of the survey that was done before said 90-some percent of larger businesses or businesses are already providing earned sick days to full-time workers or full-time workers. 90% of full-time workers are getting earned sick days and 40% of part-time workers. And, you know, I applaud the good employers who are giving them those benefits and providing them with the opportunity to take leave when they need to. And, you know, those employers are doing the right thing. Let's just make sure all employers do the right thing. Make it universal coverage and make it equitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so if you would like to make a comment, not on Witherspoon-Jackson, but on some other issue, I'd ask that you come to the microphone now, and we'll hear from everybody who is in line at the microphone now, and then I'd like to close the public comments so we can get on to the other items on the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm honored to be here. I first want to compliment our city engineer. The way he handled getting Mr. Whitman to come in to help us with Avalon Bay was significant. It was important, and I want to thank you as a citizen and nearby homeowner. I hope that you took, Mr. Kaiser, look into the situation about the construction materials that were used and fire retardant situation, because I was inside, and I'm a little worried about some of the construction, so you might want to just check that out, because you've done an excellent job, and I want to thank you, but this might be something you should check out, because I saw some awfully cheap construction. I built houses for 15 years, so I know something about construction.
Well, Dr. Hammond, can you make sure you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Dr. Sam Hamod, H-A-M-O-D, of 282 through 286 Witherspoon Street. My apology, Mayor, thank you. The second thing I wanted to do was thank and compliment our police department on the way he handled the situation, Professor Perry. I was shocked, they really deserve good credit, and I was shocked that President Icegrew were jumping into the fray without talking to our police department first. So, I want us to praise our police department, and many people, not saying this openly, but as a former professor and a minority member, being an Arab and a Muslim, I appreciate the fact they've always been straightforward, honest, and open with us, and treated all of us with great care and honesty and integrity, and I appreciate that. So, these are two things. The third thing I want to bring to your attention, council, is that we all want lower taxes. You know we want it. You want lower taxes. I would like you, after having spent six months of my time revisiting all the documents in the case, trying to get the university to lose its nonprofit status, I would like you to revisit that. You did side with the university. You represent us, not the university. We elected you to represent us. And I know, Bernie, you said you made the best deal you could, but as I told you, Princeton University is not going to leave here. They're going to be here. They're stuck with us. And I do believe, Madam Mayor, that it's incumbent upon all of us to try to get lower taxes for everyone's sake, and this would help us all a great deal. So, I would like you to revisit your position, all of you, on the situation vis-à-vis the citizens of Princeton versus Princeton University and the aspect of its tax-free situation. The last comment I want to make is, there will be more students, yes, but I was ashamed of President Bowen, that he wants to have more online courses, which means they won't be here in residence. They'll be getting money. This is another money-making scheme, because I taught online courses. You never see the students. They get grades. They get a degree. It's all about making money. Unfortunately, I felt bad that our university has lowered itself to this position. So, please reconsider your position, council, on our behalf. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lampert, Council. First and foremost, I want to give this, Craig, Mr. Garcia asked, he'd give this to you because he forgot to give you the petitions for the earned sick...
Just make sure you're, make sure you're right in the mic.
Okay. I want to give this to you. Craig asked me to give this to you because he forgot to. These are petitions for the earned sick leave, okay?
And Layton, can you just state your name for the record?
Layton Mullen, 230 Birch Avenue, Princeton, New Jersey. I just want to talk a little bit briefly about the earned sick leave. I don't have information or statistics to back this up, but I would dare say that Princeton per capita could very well be the highest concentration or have the highest concentration of Latin American population in the entire state of New Jersey. I have eaten in most restaurants in this town, and I can suggest to you that who here would want to eat in a restaurant where people were infected with a virus or even a cold were serving meals because they couldn't afford not to work because they wouldn't get paid if they didn't work? I watch people in this town, in particular, Central American, Latin American people, and we all see them riding their bikes to their work, employment. We see them riding their bikes over to the shopping center with bags of laundry. They are the hardest-working people in this town. They raise families, and by the way, most of them, even though we're not talking about this, now live where? In the Witherspoon-Jackson community. They are forced to live in crowded apartments and homes. Why? Because they must do so because they don't make enough money for just a family of three to live in a home or an apartment. I would also caution this board to be guarded when individuals appear before you and talk to you about your scope of jurisdiction and calling it philosophy. This is not philosophy. This is a practical matter. You're our elected officials, and you're responsible for what goes on in this town. And if you don't do it, who will? This is not a state-of-New Jersey situation. This is a local situation. Like Tip O'Neill said, "All politics are local." So, do your job and make a good decision regarding this, and please do not listen to naysayers and those who come before you with an objective in mind that might not be for all of the people, but for some of the people. Thank you.
Dean Smith, 17 McLean Street, and also the co-owner of the toy store, Jazams, on Palmer Square. I would like to voice my support of a sick leave ordinance for the town and something that is inclusive of part-time workers. How that works out, I don't know. We've discussed it a lot within the walls of our business in terms of logistics and so forth, but we personally feel that it's important. Right now, we have paid time off, as the business community is talking about it, which, in our view, is very different than a sick leave, and I think the two are being confounded, and it's a little disingenuous. So, a lot of businesses are giving paid time off, so, but if people have to use that time for when they're sick, well, then they may not get vacation. So, there's a little bit of wordplay going on there, and I, and I think that that's important for everyone to realize in terms of surveys and so forth, how they're being worded and how people are looking at these things. For business owners, and this is where the business community, I think, needs to have some self-reflection. For a lot of us in the business community, they're business owners. If our children, our families get ill, we take time off, and there's not a lot of thought about the impact on our pocketbooks. But for our employees, there is, and there's heavy, heavy considerations when they have to do this. So, we are considered, I mean, I think in the retail community, if you would talk to our employees and other folks who know us, that we are fairly generous in our, in our business. But we do not have a program for paid sick leave for our part-time employees, and nor do we have something for paid sick leave for our full-time employees. And when this came up, we had a lot of soul-searching to do, and we have been discussing it, and we've been discussing it with Jerome and other folks, and so, for a business that doesn't have it in place right now, we would like to have something in place. It's these moments when we have opportunity, and the discussion starts on, at least in our business, the discussion starts on our end, where is the gap? Because it's important to us that our employees are living happy and healthy lives and lives where they are in, are taking care of their families and themselves. That is very important. And so, I would encourage, if you are going to have a working group, that there be somebody from the business community, because there's others of us out there, that somebody from the business community that would like to see this ordinance cover part-timers as well, be part of that process. Thank you.
Mayor, we can't have people speak twice at this point because we, we haven't even started our meeting yet, so...
I signed up urgently for the parking part, and I, since I was told that I had...
Oh, did you not speak initially?
I did, but not on parking. It's a separate issue.
Yeah.
She has a different topic.
Sorry.
Okay, you'll have to wait, because it's almost eight o'clock, and we'll do it at the end, okay? But I want to keep moving here at the meeting. Okay, so, I'm going to close the public comment, and we'll reopen it at the very end of the meeting if anybody has anything else. And I do want to move on to reports, and the first report is on the Earned Sick Days Working Group of Council. At our last meeting, we didn't have a full complement of council, so we want to make sure everybody was here, and I want to thank the members of council who volunteered to be on the working group. So, Council President Lance Liverman has agreed to serve, Councilman Patrick Simon, and Councilwoman Heather Howard. So, those will be the three on the working group, and there were certainly a lot of good comments tonight, and hopefully you all were taking notes. I have a list of the folks who spoke, and it certainly encourages the working group to reach out to all the interested parties. And I do want to see if we can put a time limit on it and to ask the group to come back to council in, in two months, if that sounds right, eight weeks, two months, and see where we are, yeah.
Mayor, I think that makes sense, to do two months, because I think this is something that we know, if we get too close to the summer, then it gets kicked till after the summer, and so, I think we want to keep it in the timeframe of when we're doing our substantive work before summer, and that makes sense. I think, I do want to say to the public that we've heard you all on the concerns about process, and we talked, I think there was a good point made last week when we discussed this, that the three of us, Patrick Lance and I, we can, we'll come up with our ground rules, but I feel confident that my colleagues will all want to be fair in how we meet with people, and we'll be sure that if we meet with opponents, we will also have meetings with proponents, and there'll be fairness. I'm looking at my colleagues. I hope they'll shake their heads, but there will be, that we'll make sure that, that, both that we will be fair in who we're meeting with, and also that we'll be reporting back frequently so people will know. I think that's what we can do going forward, and really appreciate so many people coming out.
Great. Ms. Cunneler, and then Mr. S...
Well, I also want to make everyone understand that those of us who are not on the committee are not ceding our vote, and we're not, you know, we're not necessarily going to agree with what the committee comes up with. That will, we'll have a full discussion of all the details once, once they're finished their work. Just, I just want to make that clear, you know, you guys.
Yep, so, I have a few comments. The first is, I want to address some of the public comment around the process. Mr. Garcia actually went to the PCDO Executive Board meeting and stated that a meeting of the working group with the merchants would be inappropriate and illegal. Working Families, the organization that he works for, also has people going door-to-door spreading that same information throughout the town. This after, Mr. Garcia sent me a full draft of the ordinance on June 5, 2015, fully drafted. I'm not talking an outline. I'm not talking issues. I'm talking a full draft of the ordinance for Princeton, and he had a private meeting with me on June 6. And I know he's had private meetings with other members of council as well. I've also had meetings in, when small groups, in full disclosure, with members of the business community as well. So, I want to communicate that some of what you're hearing is from a paid lobbyist who is spinning for political advantage. And it, one of the challenges that I have up here on council is to be fair, and it's not simply to be fair to the people on the issue that I agree with, it's to be fair with people on the issue, whether I have sympathy with the issue or whether I'm, wherever I'm leaning on the issue. I need to hear all sides of it, and I need to be fair. I heard from Mr. Garcia, and I know my colleagues have as well, and I know that the business community has more information they want to share with us that they haven't shared with us yet. And I will also tell you that some of the discussions get fairly delicate. There are different things that you can share in public versus in smaller group meetings. Without naming names, I will tell you that one of the business leaders opened his books to me to show me how much of a thread, how thread, how close they are in terms of running profit versus loss, because they're concerned about cost of doing business in Princeton overall, and everything we do incrementally, he just wanted to make the point, all right? That's not something that could be accomplished in an open meeting, and it is still valid for somebody to want to do and valuable for me to hear as part of this discussion. It is actually important information that I should factor into my thinking. So, I really, in terms of process, I completely agree with what Councilwoman Howard said. We will be very fair, but I do want to caution members of the public to also be very fair and open-minded in discussions on this issue, and frankly, on a lot of other issues where we get hot-blooded about the issue, including the Witherspoon-Jackson historic district coming up later. Please talk with people you disagree with, with respect, in small groups and one-on-one. You'll learn a lot more. You'll understand a lot more about the issues, and as a community, it's, if we do that, we are having a constructive debate on the community. If we are simply fortifying our positions with the people we agree with and only talking with the people we agree with, we all know how that works. That's Washington-style politics, just import locally. Can I...
Okay, Ms. Harf.
I mean, I do, the resident of our public has been mentioned, and I do feel like, I do want to mention that he did come forward with an ordinance last year, and we all know the reason why. This was an ordinance that has been passed in other places, and it was very important to the legal strategy to have the same ordinance passed everywhere so that there wouldn't, it wouldn't be challenged in court. So, it was certainly not for nefarious reasons, that it was very clearly something that we were interested in. If we were going to pursue this, we were going to want to pursue an ordinance that would... would withstand a legal challenge and that we wouldn't have to be funding. So, I'm not sure if that's fair, and I, you know, given, and if we're going to reference Washington politics, I would hope we would keep criticisms of our constituents not up on the, not up on the dais.
Well, look, I, I'm sorry, but I disagree that basically, because you agree with it, it's fair, and if you don't, it's not. I think that's basically the position you're outlining, and I fundamentally disagree with it.
No, I don't, well, Ms. Liverman. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming forward and speaking. I think that we are going to have to have an open mind in regard to trying to come up with a reasonable direction to move forward. And what I would like to do is for us to get together, the working group, and see what is the best way to move forward, and not discuss this at this point. We'll just go on and on, and we'll come back and have something for you on how we're going to put together the working group, how we're going to meet, and the direction that we'll go. So, if you'll let us just have a little time here, we'll be back to you. But for us to discuss this now, we're just, we're not going anywhere, and I just wanted to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Butler?
Yes, I just want to make a quick point. I think public comment is closed.
Go ahead.
Has public comment closed?
Yes, it has.
Okay. I just want to say that Bernie, Heather, sorry, Bernie, Jenny and I have been working for three years harmonizing ordinances, and we have worked in the exact way that we're outlining for an earn-sick leave ordinance, exactly the same way. We've brought in people as we've gone along on every ordinance. We've brought in people that we think might have something to contribute to the ordinance, whether it's taxi drivers, residents who are interested in a particular interest in a particular subject, or people who might have expertise in a subject. And we've been doing this for three years. This is no different than the way we've treated any other ordinance, really, except that Bernie, Jenny, and I aren't doing it.
Excuse me, if I could just have a moment to speak and respond to that.
No, point of order. It's-- Excuse me, Ms. Butler, excuse me. I move that we close the public comment.
Public comment has been closed. However, Mr. Garcia's name was brought up in a way that if he wants to defend himself, I'll give him a minute, but we do have to move on with the meeting.
I'm sorry, I object. I object to that. Point of order, I object to that.
I do, too. We have got to learn to close the public session so we can have a conversation.
We did do that, except we also want to treat people with respect, and I want to give Mr. Garcia a couple minutes, and then we'll move on.
I'm sorry, but point of order, I'm going to move that we do not do this, and I'm making it a formal vote. I'm moving that we do not reopen public comment.
Do you want to reopen it, though? Please, second. Here, Carol, I was asked for--
Well, I second.
--statements, Mr. Simon.
Okay, we can't be, we can't be yelling from the floor, I'm sorry.
We've made this--
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor of closing public comment?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, and I vote no, too.
I just want to be clear, I have the utmost respect for every member of this council. I know you all personally. We had some legitimate concerns about the process that was discussed at the last meeting, and if anyone wants to look into that, they can go about 2:20 into the last meeting. We expressed concern, which we shared in a petition to the council, about the process. I don't think anyone on this council, to be clear, had any intention of doing a process that was any way out of the sunlight of what is proper government. We expressed our concern about the process, and I am sure that this council will do the right thing and follow an appropriate process. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, and I also want to reiterate my thanks to the working group for the work that lies ahead on this important issue. All right, and our next report is going to be on the bridge on 206. As we all know, oldest bridge in the state of New Jersey, went through a rough period last week. And Mr. Kaiser, if you could just bring us up to date on where things are, and I know DOT is going to come back and make the permanent repairs.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lampert. The good news is the bridge has been repaired. It's open, but there's a 20-ton weight limit on the bridge right now due to its still somewhat fragile condition. The department worked very hard, very quickly. They opened it up eight o'clock last Sunday night. They're looking ahead in terms of rehabilitating the existing Stone Arch Bridge. The good news is, we haven't, did not hear any discussion of replacing the bridge with a modern-type bridge. They are committed to keeping the look and feel of the existing bridge, but the devil is in the, is in the details, of course. Some of the items are of concern, and the HPC received a presentation from the Department of Transportation this Monday evening. Representatives are here from the HPC, Elizabeth Kim, Councilwoman Simon, who was at the meeting as well. And what they're proposing to do is to fortify the arches of the bridge, also the parapet walls that failed, and they're planning to do that with reinforced concrete-type treatment on the inside of the parapet walls and also below the road surface itself of the bridge. In addition, there's a floodplain bridge, and that bridge is extremely poor condition, and that needs to be entirely replaced. So, the Stone Arch Bridge would be rehabilitated, the floodplain bridge would be entirely replaced. These have been on the drawing board for quite some time, and what the department would like to do is do both projects at the same time. They're attempting to fast-track the designs, because the designs haven't been completed, fast-track the approvals, and if possible, to get into construction this summer with the intent of being finished with the work this fall. So, it's a very ambitious schedule. The department has worked with the town, they've invited us to various meetings. We learned that the county is planning to replace a bridge on Carter Road that's currently used as a detour route. We brought that to attention of Department of Transportation. As a result, there's a meeting tomorrow morning that we're planning to attend. Deanna Stockton has been involved in these discussions as well, so hopefully we can resolve that matter because the county's planning to replace the bridge in July, and we can't have two bridges replaced at the same time utilizing this detour plan. The major issues of discussion is the parapet wall, how it would be constructed, if it needs to be reconstructed, what the height of the wall is, what the width of the wall is, support of the arches, how that would be done. And also, one of the most critical items is quality control on the stonework, because it's imperative that the stonework be restored properly. So, that's the summary as to where we are. I don't know if Elizabeth or any of the members of HPC or Julie wish to make any comments.
Just some additional comments that HPC had as far as their presentation they reviewed from Aurora. As Bob had said, that they're interested in the ability for the consultant to retain the character-defining features of the parapet and the arch on the bridge. Other concerns that came up was the speed, size, and weight of truck traffic on the bridge, which has always been a concern of theirs. They're also, one of the recommendations is they would also like to request pre-qualification of contractors, as Bob said, as far as the stonework. And Aurora is a very well-known engineering firm that has a good reputation of doing work with NJ DOT. However, they felt that it would be to everyone's benefit if they could perhaps have a subconsultant to advise them on the historic Masonry Arch Bridge design work.
Mr. Miller, and then Ms. Butler.
What is the detour route for heavy trucks?
The detour route for heavy trucks is 518 to Carter Road. There are some issues currently with some of the trucks going southbound, westbound on Route 27 that's getting down to the bridge. Department of Transportation has had excessive discussions with our police department, and those issues are in the process of being addressed.
So, that is why I've seen a number of heavy trucks on Mercer Street, then, or Princeton Pike?
Correct. The trucks get down to Lover's Lane, turn on Lover's Lane. Our police department is stepping up enforcement, and they have a police officer out on Mercer at this point checking to make sure that those trucks no longer get down Mercer. But at the same time, there's additional signage needed to provide advance warning for those and other trucks to go north on 206 rather than south when they come to the western end of Nassau Street.
I'm happy to hear about the additional enforcement because if my memory serves me correctly, a few years ago, a heavy truck took out part of the bridge on Mercer Street over Stony Brook.
Yes, that's correct, and there's been numerous, numerous hits to those parapet walls.
Yes, Elizabeth, you mentioned that you recommend, HPC recommended a subconsultant for the stonework, is that?
That's correct.
And is that a recommendation that the county, is it binding at all? Do they have to do that? And what would you anticipate the additional cost of that would be, then?
I don't know.
No idea? And do they have to listen to you on this, or I mean, what?
They didn't, they didn't decline.
Okay, so, they don't have to, and they might take your advice, and we don't know how much that would add to the cost of the project.
Right, what happens is, they would have to go in front of the Historic Sites Council meeting, which they anticipate going in April.
The state? This would be the state?
Yes. And at that point, they would make their presentation and their suggestions. The HPC will be meeting on the 21st of this month to write up a memo, which will be sent over to SHIPBO for them to have. Andrea Tingi was present at the meeting as well, so she was aware of the comments that were made.
Okay. Before we leave, Bob Kaiser, can I just say one thing? It sounded like Dr. Hammond said he was in the Avalon Bay property, which is a construction site, and is that not trespassing? I mean, we wouldn't want people going in there without--
The Avalon Bay property is fenced off, it's safety concerns and so forth, so nobody, nobody should be going into that, into that property.
Without proper authorization.
Yeah, proper pools.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, now we'll move on to the main item for this evening, which is an ordinance introduction, an ordinance by Princeton, creating a new historic preservation overlay district to be known as the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District, and amending the code of the Township of Princeton, New Jersey, 1968. And before we--
Madam Mayor, can I, I have to recuse myself--
Yes.
Only because I own, I own property in the area, so I'll listen.
Good night, Lance.
Good night.
Thank you. And before we have the staff presentation and the discussion on this, I'd like to introduce it so that it gets on the floor, and then if we make amendments to it through the course of the evening, we can do that. But is there a motion to introduce it?
I'll say.
It's been moved by Ms. Howard and seconded by Mr. Miller. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Howard? To put it on the floor for introduction.
Yes.
I'm sorry, are we introducing the ordinance itself?
Yes. This was recommended at the agenda meeting, and then if we make amendments, we'll make amendments to it.
It's a slightly different process than we've used, but the problem is, in our previous process, we've lost some of our context because we were amending ordinances before we were actually introducing them. And so, we've, we've lost some information, and in fact, we're going to have to go back and sort of redo some things that we did before. This way, we'll have the ordinance introduction, any amendments, it'll be noted, who introduced them, who seconded them, whether they passed--
I do want to move on, though, so Madam Poitiers, call it off.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, we have the ordinance on the floor, and just to go over the process for this, we're going to have our planner, Mr. Solo, outline the district for us. We'll bring it to council for questions. I do want people to know that Julie Capizoli, who's chair of the HPC, can be with us until 9:30 this evening. So, if people have questions for Julie, we should get them to her at the beginning of this discussion, and then we'll open it up for public comment. And we have the sign-up sheets. We'll do it like last time, we'll start with the people who either live in the district or own property in the proposed district, and then we'll move to the second sign-up sheet of concerned neighbors outside of the district. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Solo.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm going to try to be brief. What you have before you is an ordinance that's based upon mayor and council's direction at the February 22 work session to create the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. Generally, and I have a map up on the screen, the district is bounded by Paul Ropson Place to the south, Witherspoon Street to the east, Birch Avenue, the ordinance says, to the south, it should be to the north, and that's the first whereas, so hopefully, we can catch that and make an amendment as appropriate.
Can you make sure you're right into the mic, because it's hard to hear?
Yeah. Bayard Lane is to the west. The site does not include either the Merwick-Stanworth site or the Y. I'm going to just basically outline briefly. Here's Birch Avenue, so it's all the residential properties on both sides of the street. To the east is Witherspoon Street. Right here is Witherspoon Lane, so it includes one lot in, and then the lots on the east side of Witherspoon Street, down to almost Shirley Court, just a little bit before that, and then it continues on the west side of Witherspoon Street, down to Paul Ropson Place, over to John Street, including both sides of John Street, and then down to Lee Avenue, both sides of Lee Avenue, and then out to Bayard Lane. I should point out, at the meeting on the 22nd, we discussed removing, and this map shows them removed, the three non-contributing sites on Birch Avenue, that's the Bank of Princeton, the gas station, and the restaurant, which is now an office building. We also, along Witherspoon Street, this is where, if you can see where the little hand is, that's the main building of the Princeton Packet. There were three lots that were requested that are part of the Packet Office Complex. There are homes that have been used by the Packet for many years. Those were also taken out of the original boundary packet that was done. That's a quick summary. The ordinance, as I indicated, does have a bunch of whereas's. Those whereas's state in general the reason why we are doing this. In Section 1 of the ordinance, it categorizes this new historic district as a Type 2. You may recall from our meeting on the 22nd that Type 2 is basically improvements that are made to structures that are visible from the public way, or the public street, are what is being reviewed so that if it's at the back of the house and no one can see it, it does not get reviewed by the HPC. I'm going to stop there, see if there are questions from council, and then if you want to turn it over to the public.
Are there any, are there any questions about the map for Mr. Solo? Mr. Miller?
Can you please clarify the status of the properties that are adjacent to the wording Shirley Court and south of there on Witherspoon Street? Now, those properties, they show up as, no coloration, no dotting?
Right. South of Shirley Court, they are not in the district. You can see where the little bubbles are on this map. So, on the east side, it runs from just a little bit, one lot past Shirley Court, down to Witherspoon Lane, and then over this one little lot.
Is there an explanation? Because the, on that side of Witherspoon Street, it's just not an even border, so are there reasons why some of those properties are in and some of those are out? And maybe that's a question for--
On which side?
Just right where the hand is. So, on that side of Witherspoon Street, there's some of the properties are in, some are out, and is-- some of the properties are in, some are out. And is, can you just go through the reasoning for why some of those properties are in and why some of them are out?
Primarily, it's the recommendation from, from Ys in this general area. What may help is, let me put up, we have it over there as well, but I have the PDF of what's contributing and not. I'm not certain that'll shed more light, but let's see. So, you can see, the majority of those sites were considered contributing. And I believe that's why. I don't know, Elizabeth or Julie, if you want to jump in and say anything more. This is a map that comes from the Ys report. And you can see the properties that were in, with the exception of, three of them were all contributing. So, the consultant jumped to the east side of Witherspoon in this area. Other areas along the east side were either outside of the study boundaries or were not considered contributing.
The consultant actually did a study of all the properties on Witherspoon Street on the other side. So, if you actually look at their architectural survey inventory, you'll see it for every single property over there. I believe the reason that the properties that are south of where the designation is on the, that's right, on that side, is because they were all non-contributing. And so, what happens is, you'll see some of the properties there that are non-contributing. They're kind of, you'll see one that's contributing and one non-contributing, two that's contributing. So, for consistency, that's the reason he kept it together. But from that point south, he felt that it had been altered so much that it was non-contributing and not worth being part of the district.
Ms. Howard?
Can we stick with that part over there? And it's, we've heard from folks about, and there's a lot of confusion, about 205 Witherspoon. And maybe, Julie, you could address that. Why, first of all, would you know which one 205 is, Lee? I mean, where on the?
On this map, it's right here. It's at the corner of Witherspoon Lane and Witherspoon.
And it's considered contributing?
Yes.
Well.
It's two properties on one lot.
That would be helpful to, yeah. I mean, Julie, could you just speak to why that's contributing and why you think it should be in the district?
Thank you. When our consultants looked at the boundaries, they surveyed the entire area and went outside of the RFP because they had to look at what, what made sense in terms of their justification for the district. So, they were looking for properties that were built between 1830 and 1969 that contributed to the feel and understanding of that neighborhood. So, they felt that, I, we did not discuss individual properties such as 205, like we didn't go house by house. But, I see, I have an email that Elizabeth gave me. And since I wasn't really part of this conversation, I'm going to have Elizabeth go over this with you, just because we did not discuss 205 specifically. So, where she did with the consultant. So, let me hand it over.
So, the property owner had reached out to me and had concerns about their property being part of the designated district. And so, as Julie said, we didn't go through property by property with the consultant. But as there were issues that came up, we did discuss it. So, this was not one that came up until just recently. So, I reached out to the consultant since we knew he wasn't going to be here, to see if he could give us some feedback on it. And what he basically said is, they looked at the building after last month's meeting, and they felt that it should remain. And firstly, said, there's nothing arbitrary about its inclusion, given its age, location, outbuilding, one a few with outbuildings in the district, and has undergone change. But it is correct that it was done in the 1950s, which is the period of significance. And the facing is with real bricks. So, he felt that as a continuity to the area, which also goes up Witherspoon Lane, that it should be inclusive.
While we're, while we're talking about that property, then that brings up a question because in a Type 2, then, because that is a corner property, what are the implications for their back buildings? That, that, there's a small brick, in this case, there's a small brick building and a garage. Are they included in this? And then, you know, typically in a Type 2, you'd be able to change the back if it's not visible from the front. But this is a corner property, so you, you can see all sides of it.
Right. If it's visible from the right of Y, then it would be under the privy of the HPC to determine whether it be ordinary maintenance, administrative approval, or go before the HPC commission. So, it depends on what they wanted to do with those structures back there.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Simon?
So, that, that was one property that, we received an email requesting us to exclude from the district. Another one was 282, 284, 286. Mr. Solo, have you had a chance to identify that property on the map? Do you know which one it is?
I believe that, that's the one on the corner of Witherspoon and Birch. Is that correct?
Yes, it's right here. This unusual shape, right at the corner. It's a two-family, I believe.
Right. I believe that the gentleman stopped in today and he dropped off a letter. Is that correct? That's the one where it was written by the, the owner's attorney? Is that right? Or is that a different one?
Yes, it was written by the owner.
Oh. Oh, by the owner, that's correct. And he had questioned about the, the inclusion of that. He was concerned because he had stated that it wasn't in the original study. And I explained to him that with the RFP, did allow the opportunity for the consultant to be able to look outside the area. And as I had stated, he actually looked at everything on Witherspoon Street within the area of this project. And that's how he made the determination that he wanted to include it. And I know that the property owner was concerned because he felt that he was not privy to it. But as some of the other property owners who were outside the regular study area, they were notified at the same time when the report was finalized. So, I'm sure that the property owner will get up to discuss what his concerns are about it.
So, yes, I actually do have a question about that process, just to understand the detail. And I guess the starting point is, looking at this map, can you describe for us the original RFP area versus, I mean, obviously, we can see where we've landed. But can you describe what's new, what was added by the consultant?
I could do it on this map. I could kind of outline it, if that's all right. The RFP area was Birch to Bayard, down to Paul Ropson to Witherspoon.
I'm sorry. So, the north side of Birch and the east side of Witherspoon are the adds. And, and then in the study, they excluded Merwick-Stanworth and the Ys.
Correct.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, what about the Momo property on the other side of, was that in the original?
It was not. And they had actually-
Okay, they added it, and then HPC took it out.
Right. The HPC determined that, they felt that that shouldn't be in.
Okay. Is council ready to hear public comment?
Okay. Well, could I say something? You know, I feel as if when we had the HPC meeting in December, excuse me, I don't know how you would characterize it, Julie, but did you feel that the pros and cons were about 50/50, 60/40? Can you, I mean, if you had to, and while you're thinking about that, let me just go on. And it ties into, I think, Patrick's earlier point about listening to all sides of this. I feel when the council had their discussion, then most of the people who had opposition to this didn't feel comfortable coming out to the meeting. And I've shared my concern with some of my colleagues. They seem not to care as much as I do. But I do wonder what our responsibility is to provide an environment that everybody feels as if they can be heard, whether they're in favor or not in favor. And I, we've been getting some of these requests. I think we've gotten another request to be excluded from the historic district. And I think, you know, we need to have some process by which everyone knows they can petition us by email. I mean, not that we will do it, but it's not fair for some people to, you know, come forward and ask that their property not be considered. And we maybe give that some consideration, whether we do it or not. And everybody doesn't have that same opportunity.
Thank you, council. But I'd just like to point out that the whole process was-
No, I'm not talking about polling. I'm not talking about polling, Julie.
Well, I think to understand-
Let her speak then.
Well, I just think to understand the decisions here, you have to understand the context of how a district is put together. I think the consultants looked at the criteria, not only from the state eligibility, but also by interviewing people, by doing research. They looked at the entire area, came up with what they felt made sense. There are many, there are buildings in this district that do not contribute to the district. But for the sake of consistency, we can't really have a district that looks like Swiss cheese, where everybody that doesn't contribute says, well, I'm going to just tear down my property. It doesn't, then why have a district? It really doesn't make any sense. So, what we've really been talking about are just the edges of this. And so, there's been some debate on what properties on the very edges, if they contribute or not, and whether they should be included. So, that's basically what the discussion boils down to, is does this building really contribute or not? And, and that can be debated. I think there was a debate definitely about the packet building. And there were some who felt that it definitely did contribute. And there were some that felt that, you know, it wasn't as important. So, I think the edges are one thing. But then to throw this up and say, oh, anyone who feels like they don't want to be in the district can just petition us and we'll, we'll change it, then it defeats the whole idea of the district.
No, I understand that, Julie. I'm not suggesting that. But I feel that, you know, we're getting some of these letters, and I, emails or pleas. And I just wonder what, you know, I just want everybody to be treated fairly and have fair consideration. We may not do that, but, but I think everybody-
I think, you know, because it's a public meeting, that whether people are opposed or for it, that they should come forward and be on record, so everyone could hear it. I mean, I think that that's the policy of a, of a public meeting. And I think that it's kind of unusual for them to be going behind. And so, the rest of the public don't know what's going on. And I think that, and I think that it should be transparent for everybody who is in the district or concerned about the district, that they have the same information.
And I would just, I, I think that we do need to have a safe environment here. And I think we need to treat each other with respect up here on the dais. And I think we need to listen to everybody who wants to speak. And it's like with any issue, and we all have a lot of experience with this, there can be different opinions. And everybody needs a chance to be heard. That's why we're having a public meeting. And it is a place where this is the forum for people to come and raise questions. And certainly, people have felt comfortable emailing us and calling us too. So, I feel like we have heard.
Right. But, but all forms of communication are public to a certain extent. I, I just, I don't know, I just worry that other, some people are getting consideration that other people aren't. That's all.
Okay. 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 So, we'll get to, we'll get to public comment in a second. I just want to have Mr. Solo answer, speak, and then we'll, we'll go to the public comment.
I just wanted to add-
We do need, let's listen to Mr. Solo.
This is part of the process. You've introduced the ordinance, which is really the first step. You've introduced the ordinance tonight. And if you go ahead and go to the next step, you'll refer to the planning board, and then it'll come back to you for a formal public hearing. Part of that process is receiving input, both at these meetings and any other way you, you reach out to your constituency. The work session, we notified everybody who was in the district or the proposed district at that time. I'm told HPC also did a notice on the expanded district back in November for their, one of their work session meetings. You will be providing formal written notice to all property owners within the district. We have a block and lot listing that is also included in the ordinance, and to people within 200 feet of the district. That's required by the state. It's out of the MLUL. So, there's a process. You're going to get comments tonight. You're going to get comments if you schedule a, a public hearing in, in a few weeks on this. Because that's, that is the process. And you'll be making your decision based on the record. We talked at the work session about some of the properties, whether they stay in or come out. You can modify those boundaries later. You can put them back in later. And that's all part of the process. And that's really all I wanted to say, is understand that just because we had one work session, that didn't lock anything in. This is truly the official beginning of that process.
Okay. And I should have clarified this at the very beginning, but I'll do it now, just the, the process that the ordinance goes through. So, tonight, we have introduced it. It will then go to the planning board. There might be some changes to it as we talk about the map and some of the boundaries. It will go to the planning board for the planning board review. And then it will come back to council for a public hearing and a vote. So, there was an article in one of the papers that said we're going to be doing the final vote tonight. That is incorrect. That's true for any single ordinance we do. It's a multi-step process. So, just want to make sure everybody understood that there's still going to be at, at least two additional meetings after tonight.
Mayor, if I could just ask, ask for clarification on that. Will the people who are in the district and/or on the boundary of it be notified for both the planning board hearing and the, the public hearing of the council? Is that how it works?
Typically, they're not notified for the planning board hearing. That'll be April 7th, if you send it to them. That's the next available meeting date. It's not typically because what they're doing is reviewing it for consistency with the master plan. The formal public hearing will be at the date that you designate, should you move this along.
Okay. And then, what are the possible outcomes from the planning board meeting? And that gets back to us.
They could find it consistent with the master plan and tell you, they recommend adoption. They could find it inconsistent and recommend that you not adopt it. They could find it consistent with the master plan and make recommendations for changes. They're allowed, and the statute provides for them to comment in general, but most specifically as to whether or not it is consistent with the master plan.
And do any of those change our process? Or is it pretty much the same process? We have a public hearing afterwards?
That's pretty much the same process we follow for any ordinance, any land use ordinance. The council introduces it. It gets referred to the planning board for consistency with the master plan and other comments they may have, and then sent back to council for your public hearing and adoption.
Okay. No, I, I think you've answered my question, but just to repeat, to make Now, I think you've answered my question, but just to repeat, to make sure I'm clear. If they say, for example, it's not consistent, or it's consistent with changes, does that change our process formally, or is it really the same process?
It's the same process. If they find it inconsistent with the master plan, you can still adopt it. You need what's called a supermajority to do that, and you need to state your reasons why you're doing that, and why, even though it's not consistent with the master plan, council believes it's a good idea, basically. The mayor and council have final say on the ordinance. The planning board is only advisory. The municipal land use law requires you to have a supermajority and make specific findings if they find it's inconsistent.
Okay. And a supermajority is two-thirds? Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Of those, well, I guess it's the same either way. So four votes instead of, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I had two other requests for preparation for tonight that I'm looking at Mr. DeShield or Mr. Solo to ask if they're done. The first is the impact of the, of this district on the housing authority. Would they be required to go through a review? Has anybody reached out to them to ask if they view it as cost generative for providing affordable housing?
Actually, both of us reached out to different people. I spoke to Scott Parsons, who's the executive director, informed him that we were considering creating a historic district that would include Hagman Homes on Clay Street. Explained to him the process, what would be entailed, what would be reviewed. He did not have any concern. He thought it might have some impacts, but not enough that he wanted to say, "You should take us out." And I know, Mr. DeShield, you spoke with the-
Had the same conversation with the chairman and same comments.
Okay. So there was a part of that question, though, is are they even under the purview to begin with? Or might be voluntary? What is the role? Is it advisory? Is it exactly the same as everybody else?
There's two parts to that answer. One, as a sort of municipal-type agency, they would probably, they may fall under that, that they're exempt from our general rules and regulations. However, if they're using federal funds, there's a 106 review. So they would have to go to HPC anyhow for a review. It's not a review and approval, but it is a review and comment, and they would need to address those comments.
Thank you. And then I had the similar question for the Rec Department and Mary Moss.
Yes. Under the municipality's land use ordinance, we are exempt from any of our rules and regulations concerning land use. And that is based on the municipal land use law for the state of New Jersey. Doesn't specifically stay in the municipal land use law in terms of how we, projects are reviewed, but there is a provisions in there to call for capital reviews of projects done by the municipality. And it really talks there more about planning boards, but that's consistent the way it would be with the historic commission, in which they are allowed to make recommendations. The municipality does not have to follow those recommendations. They just have to get those recommendations from the board. They then, I have seen it in different ways from different communities have done it differently. Some just provide, get the recommendations from the boards or commissions. In one meeting, some do a back and forth where they work with the commissions to work out any recommendations or suggestions. It's really a policy decision on how the council will handle that.
Right. Well, that's, the crux of my question is essentially whether it's a cooperative and voluntary relationship, or whether it's mandated by law. And that's what I'm trying to make sure.
It's a voluntary.
Voluntary. Thank you.
Okay. Is council ready to hear from the public? Okay. So let's start with Dr. Sam Hammond, Leighton Newlin, and Reverend Burrows.
Dr. Sam Hammond, 282-8486 Witherspoon Street. Thank you, council. I would like to show you this map. This area here-
You need to carry it. No, no, you have to.
Thank you, Mayor. This area here is part of Zone B1. And in this property, and the rest of it's the Packet. I thought the Packet would can help represent me, but they took care of their own part. But this area fronts Witherspoon. That's my address. It is not Birch Avenue. It's always Zone B1. I do conduct business, international consulting work, and writing workshops there. And it was my intention at some point, perhaps, to work with the Packet. And the other, there was another person in that block. We might make it Second Town Center, which would increase your income with taxes as the way, and I want to raise a question about this, Ms. Julie. I don't know her, and I really have serious questions about the Rice Company. They never contacted me once, either by telephone, or by letter, or in person. And so the fact that they allegedly talked to people in the neighborhood, I have two other friends who also never heard from them. So I'm not sure what kind of consulting they worked in, and why we paid them to do a halfway job. These are matters that are major concern to me, but also to others. So Ms. Butler, you raised that question in the past about that area of Witherspoon Street, saying, "Well, you really want it." And then this other nonsensical statement by her, saying, "We don't want a Swiss cheese. This is property owned by people. This is not a head of cheese where you have to have a solid block." A historical district all over the country, and I've been in San Francisco, and Chicago, and elsewhere, they are all things with holes in them, spots that are not this or that. So to think that it's supposed to be all one color, one way, one thing, is nonsense. I'm in favor of the historical district, believe me. But I do not like what has been done. I was never contact, and Ms. Butler, I never knew about the meetings, otherwise I would have been there. So I'm one of those people who did not hear. If a letter was sent to me, it never arrived. You know me well enough to know if there's something that has to do with the situation here, I would be here. So I want to make this clear. And if I miss some things, I wonder how many other people were not notified. Thank you. Oh, before I forget, I would like to, I would like to add one thing. Would the council please look into how this consulting firm did us work? Because I think it's pretty shabby. It was very unprofessional.
Good evening, Mayor Lampard and council. Leighton Newlin, Birch Avenue. I too would like to make something clear. Talking about shabby work, I would go back to 2010 when they did the property evaluations. If you want to look at an entity that did some shabby work, start there. Thank you. First and foremost, let me say that of all the other 19 districts that are historic in this town, can anyone in this audience, or on council, or the mayor, tell me, have any of them districts that have singled out properties or properties that are not within the historical district? I think the answer is no. Thank you. First, let me say how pleased I and others are that you accepted the Witherspoon neighborhood for historic designation. As we move through the process, I urge you to maintain the boundaries recommended by the HPC as presented on February 22nd without exception, and to adopt the ordinance with the greatest sense of urgency. As you all know, much of the original neighborhood, African Alley, has been stripped away over time, and any unnecessary delays could result in the possibility of additional teardowns and/or proposed development that would undermine the intent of the designation. As you all know, the real and original Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood started at the very top of Witherspoon Street at the corner of Nassau. I also want to reiterate and bring to your attention the historic significance of Witherspoon Street. A bordering thoroughfare of the district where Mr. Greg's, Greg's Corner, Mr. Lee, Lee's Barber Shop, Mr. Gail, Gail's Cleaner, now Village Silver, and Virginia Mills Beauty Shop, now Little Taste of Cuba, to name a few owned and managed businesses. It is also where the neighborhood's oldest places of worship, Mount Pisgah AME Church, organized in 1832, and the Witherspoon Presbyterian Church, organized in 1840, are located. For Witherspoon Street to be excluded from the district, or to be singled out and beset with additional guidelines that would compromise the streetscape design and historical integrity would be a travesty. Any new development along this distinguished street should incorporate the historic preservation guidelines, and if anything, serve to bring the promenade back to its splendor and magnificence of days gone by. Those of us who have fought and advocated for this monumental and historic achievement realize that the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood has a past, a present, and a future. We know that given our country's current landscape, that incorporating the neighborhood's history into that of the towns will give citizens and visitors a greater appreciation of the progress we are making to overcome racial barriers and bias on both a local and a national level. We also understand and appreciate that all neighborhoods evolve over time, and we look forward to the creative and hopefully artistic development that is sure to come. We only ask that what will be has some symmetry to what is and what was. That, after all, is what historic preservation is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Reverend Burrows here? She's, she, okay. Adele, Beth Chalder, Jared Witt, and Jim Kilgore.
Hope you can hear me. I'm reading this letter that was, they couldn't come today, so I'm reading it for them. That is Edward McClure and Louise McClure, residents of the district. To the Princeton council, we are writing in support of the historic designation of our neighborhood, the John Witherspoon neighborhood. The two of us, Edward and Louise, have lived at 13 Green Street for three decades. Our daughter grew up here, and we would like to live here for a while longer. We enjoy interacting with our neighbors, and we enjoy the ambiance of the street. The case for preservation on the basis of the African-American history that was and is being lived here seems to us compelling. If, as a result of historic designation, land values rise less rapidly in the future than has been the case in recent years, this seems to us a price worth paying to retain our quality of life and preserve an historic place. We are optimistic that with good sense and goodwill on the part of those administering the historic preservation, the neighborhood can retain its small scale and still thrive into the future. We hope that you will act without delay on this matter. Thank you. Edward S. McClure, Louise McClure. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to give the letter to the clerk, it'll be put in a minute.
Good evening. My name's Jared Witt. I'm here on behalf of the owners of 201 to 205 Witherspoon. And we submitted a letter, which you referenced. Thank you for giving that, your consideration. You know, the owners support this district, and in that respect, as far as their property that's 201 Witherspoon, which is a single-family house, which clearly fits within historically significant property in this district, that makes sense to have that included. The property that the council discussed earlier, 205, which is a corner property, it's a boundary property, as we discussed, on the edge. For the reasons that we believe it contains no historical significant features or uses, the inclusion of this would be inconsistent. And if you look at that in comparison with the Nick Hilton building right next to, right next to it, which is not included within the district, it doesn't seem to fit with, it seems a burden to this property that doesn't, that it should not be included. As far as the process, this property was not initially included within the district. And I do believe that others did have notice and had the opportunity to look into this, speak with the Historic Preservation Committee, and plead their case with facts in order to have their property excluded. This property was not given that notice and did not have that opportunity. And we're here now, and I think if you look at all the facts of this particular building, how it's outlaid, the front building and the back building, which have no historically significant features, the inconsistency that it's on this, on the east side of Witherspoon, it's next-door neighbor property, a similar brick-faced building is not a, is not included. We ask that you reconsider and consider, you know, excluding this property. Thanks.
You know, can, just so that we don't forget, because didn't we just hear from our experts that it is historically significant?
It is conforming.
And conforming? I mean, I just wanted to refresh my memory and make sure. There are, there are two structures on that one lot. So there's one very small-
I heard, right. I thought I heard that both were.
I just, I mean, just-
I think I heard that too. And I heard that, to this question of notice, that this was considered by the consultant, by HPC, and by our staff.
Right. This is the email that I had with the consultant today, because the, Mr. Witt had come and dropped off a letter, which he had thought that was actually delivered to us. And when I had talked to Josh Cinder, I had told him that we did not receive it. So that's why Mr. Witt had stopped by today to drop it off and discuss it. Was it today?
Yeah, that was today.
Okay. And at that time, I was able to, by email, reach out to the consultant to find out a little bit about it. As I said, we didn't talk about every single property unless there was something that needed to be discussed, or was a concern or whatever. And so that was the email that I read you, where he said that it was not arbitrarily selected, that it was significant.
I don't see any factors pointed out to why it's significant. I mean, it's a brown, brick-faced building. It once had a front porch or some sort of entrance on it, which, based on inspection of the property, was removed at some point.
Well, the little house is said to be 1905.
The little house is clearly, and I agree, the little house is clearly fits within the neighborhood. All of the houses right next to it, and there's no question about that.
But they do say that the building might have been refaced with that brick in the 50s, which does fall within our timeframe of the, that we're considering historic.
That's correct. And he had also stated that it was real brick instead of just a facade. But if you were able to-
As is the Nick Hilton building right next door.
If you were able to look on the architectural survey within it, did you look at it and see what was there? Okay.
I don't find any of that convincing, I suppose. I love what he says is historically significant about this building, that it's brick.
Well, he is a professional. What can I say? You know, he, he-
Right. And I, and I guess there we go to process.
Okay. So I think we're gonna, we're keeping notes. There's gonna be several properties that I think there, that are gonna be raised. And then I just want to make sure we get a chance to hear from everybody, and then we'll bring it back to council for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I had the similar question for the Rec Department and Mary Moss.
Yes. Under the, the land, the municipality's land use ordinance, we are exempt from any of our rules and regulations concerning land use. And that is based on the municipal land use law for the state of New Jersey. Doesn't specifically stay in the municipal land use law in terms of how we, projects are reviewed, but there is a provisions in there to call for capital reviews of projects done by the municipality. And it really talks there more about planning boards, but that's consistent the way it would be with the historic commission, in which they are allowed to make recommendations. The municipality does not have to follow those recommendations. They just have to get those recommendations from the board. They then, I have seen it in different ways from different communities have done it differently. Some just provide, get the recommendations from the boards or commissions. In one meeting, some do a back and forth where they work with the commissions to work out any recommendations or suggestions. It's really a policy decision on how the council will handle that.
Right. Well, that's, the crux of my question is essentially whether it's a cooperative and voluntary relationship, or whether it's mandated by law. And that's what I'm trying to make sure.
It's a voluntary.
Voluntary. Thank you.
Okay. Is council ready to hear from the public? Okay. So let's start with Dr. Sam Hammond, Leighton Newlin, and Reverend Burrows.
Dr. Sam Hammond, 282-8486 Witherspoon. Thank you, council. I would like to show you this map. This area here-
You need to carry it. No, no, you have to.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. This area here is part of Zone B1. And in this property, and the rest of it's the Packet. I thought the Packet would can help represent me, but they took care of their own part. But this area fronts Witherspoon. That's my address. It is not Birch Avenue. It's always Zone B1. I do conduct business, international consulting work, and writing workshops there. And it was my intention at some point, perhaps, to work with the Packet. And the other, there was another person in that block. We might make it Second Town Center, which would increase your income with taxes as the way, and I want to raise a question about this, Ms. Julie. I don't know her, and I really have serious questions about the Rice Company. The CBD is also almost co-terminous with the historic district along Nassau Street. So, I mean, we do have non-residential properties in historic districts.
Okay. I'd like to now call up Shirley Satterfield, Yaina Moore, and Al Carnavale.
Good evening, members of council, administrative staff. I'm Shirley Satterfield, 30 Quarry Street. With the time that I have, I will take you, those of you who are here and those who are watching in the comfort of their homes, on a verbal tour of Witherspoon Street. Because Princeton was a segregated Jim Crow town, the African-American residents were not welcomed in the establishments and restaurants, even though it was all families whose labor and expertise sustained these establishments. So there were many businesses and service establishments owned by families in the area from Nassau Street that we called Uptown to Birch Avenue. Many were businesses and homes. Witherspoon Street from Jackson Street, now Paul Rubson Place, to Birch Avenue was known as African Alley or Guinea Lane. It was a fellow affair that was traveled by John Witherspoon as he traveled from Tusculum, his homestead, to Nassau Hall with his slaves, where the trolley traveled from Princeton to Trenton. And where colored, Negro, Black African-Americans lived, worshipped, were educated, and had businesses. Along with John Street and all the streets between John and Witherspoon Street, Witherspoon Street has and continues to be an important boundary in the community. Now we have to prove why this noted street has to be and should be within the boundary of the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. Now follow along with me. Let's start at the corner of Witherspoon and Nassau Streets. At the corner of Witherspoon and Nassau was the property of Caesar Trent. He was a first-colored landowner, and in 1795, he owned land in the vicinity of Nassau and Witherspoon. We move to the location where La Hare's Restaurant, now Agri-Cola, was located. This was the location of a Negro publishing company that published a weekly newspaper called The Citizen. A March 12, 1909 edition of this newspaper indicated that it cost five cents a copy and was printed to dedicate the moral, intellectual, religious, and industrial improvement of the Negro race. The local editor was Henry J. Austin, father of Dr. Henry Austin, a physician who could not practice in Princeton, so he went to Trenton where his health care services flourished. There are now four Henry J. Austin Medical Centers in Trenton. The building where the jewelry store, A Place to Bead, was the location of Mr. Gale's Cleaners, the second location on Witherspoon Street. Mr. Hines was an ordinary man who did extraordinary things. He was born, educated, attended the AME Methodist Church, and served his town of Princeton from shining shoes to paving Nassau Street as when it was a dirt road, to teaching bridge at the Senior Resource Center and serving on several boards. The Albert E. Hines Plaza is one of the most visited spots in Princeton. I'm going to keep on going. Across the street on the corner of Witherspoon and Hawke Street was Mr. Briggs's Imperial Restaurant, a restaurant that he owned for 42 years, even though he had to fight the borough and appear in Trenton to keep his restaurant and his property from urban renewal. Where the little Taste of Cuba is, the cigar store, was Mrs. Virginia Mills Beauty Salon, an establishment that she had for 45 years. On the corner of Witherspoon and Green Street, in the section of Paul Rubson Center for the Arts, was the Colored Y.W.Y.M.C.A. In 1917, that building opened to serve the African-Americans for recreational, educational, and religious activities. On the opposite corner of Witherspoon and Green Street is the Paul Rubson House, the house where he was born in April 9, 1898. The house next to the Paul Rubson House was the Mance or Parsonage for the Ministers of Witherspoon Street Presbyterian Church. On the corner of Witherspoon and Quarry Streets is Witherspoon School, Witherspoon Presbyterian Church. It was established in 1847. Slaves left the first Presbyterian Church, Nassau Presbyterian, where they worshiped for years in the balcony. The white building next to the Basky Building was a tavern owned by Mrs. Allen, known as Allen's Tavern, that was established for social gathering and entertainment. The small building attached to it was Mr. Max's Sanitary Barbershop. The yellow building next to what was the drugstore was the First Call Fields Community House for the African-American Princeton University students who were not welcome to attend the Eden Clubs on Prospect Street. These students also did community service. The Call Field Center is now located on the corner of Prospect and Olden Streets. The church on the corner of Witherspoon and McLean Street is the oldest of the four African-American churches in Princeton, the Mount Piska AME African-American Methodist Episcopal Church established in 1832. On the opposite corner is an apartment building that was the Witherspoon School for Colored Children, established in 1873 to educate children from kindergarten through eighth grades. When they graduated from eighth grade, they had to go to Trenton or return to the South because the high school did not accept African-Americans. On the other side of this street, on the corner of Witherspoon and Shirley Court, is Hunan's Restaurant. That was the location of Mr. Tallock's Restaurant for years during the '30s through the '50s. Next to the building is a yellow house that was Mrs. Vance's Ice Cream Parlor. Further down Witherspoon Street is the entrance to the Colored Cemetery that was established in 1807. On the corner of Witherspoon and McLean Streets is the Henry Pennell Learning Center. It may not be historic, but it is a building that provides community service to children and residents of Princeton. The land where Community Park is was an area given by Moses Taylor Pine to the colored men for athletic recreation. I have more to say, but I think people will let me do it after they talk.
Thank you. If you came late, you came past the point where we have the sign-in sheet. So we're going to start with everybody who signed in, and then we'll open it up for others.
Can I give me your time?
Next time, get here early.
Yaina Moore, 19 Green Street. I want to talk first about the boundaries. Boundaries and properties that should be included in the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District are, as the HPC has recommended, and as Shirley Satterfield has outlined, the street boundaries inclusive of all of the properties, both sides of the street. I don't think that was ever intended where the neighborhood would have been considered split in two, Birch or Witherspoon. It doesn't even make common sense. But I think, you know, the consultant may attest to that very fact. When you define a boundary, it's not that you're saying one side of the street. Whether they were contributing, new or old uses, all of them are significant to the history and appropriate Type 2 HPC review of the neighborhood, no Swiss cheese. In fact, the current boundary doesn't even begin to address the full breadth of the geography, landholdings, businesses, or the trials and tribulations of indigenous residents that are worthy of commemorating beyond what we are discussing tonight, a much diminished Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. Witherspoon to Nassau, down to Nassau, where John used to meet Nassau, and that is the area that's now Palmer Square, the absence of Jackson Street, where homes were removed in order for Palmer Square to expand, as well as the segregated section of the cemetery, the setback office building that was discussed earlier to the Hunan Restaurant area, even Shirley Court. All of these lands are not in the prescribed district. So when Councilman Butler at the last meeting stressed the importance of telling the story, I agree that the whole story should be eventually told, a story that is not necessarily bound by the limits of what we see today or the properties within the HPC current boundaries. With regard to community values, I'm concerned by the back channel and the promotion of individual interests. That's why those people aren't here, primarily by those who seek unfettered creative freedom, maximum realtor fees, and unbridled profits out of speculative real estate deals. The lack of community interest versus self-interest is why they didn't come. And I stressed the last term speculative, a proposition that has less than a secure outcome or known quantity impacted by a myriad of issues that go well beyond this historic designation, including zoning, cost of money as an interest rates, market factors, et cetera. None of us are guaranteed a profit from our investments whether we choose to live in them or flip them. So I would hope elected officials are more concerned about the owner, residents, and occupants, residents who often benefit from the value that stability provides collegially as well as financially, as compared to the experiences and results of volatility and disruption. Government should not be in the business of sacrificing the neighborhood to be investor-friendly. And with regard to Mr. Kilgore's comments, and I really have a constructive suggestion with regard to this, having worked on this problem several years ago, historic designation does not inherently bring negative impacts to businesses in this main street setting. All of the downtown district is a historic district. And until the market went bad, it was doing fine. I agree with Mr. Kilgore that consideration of uses is important. However, it requires the town to establish a vision about how it will accommodate more and large populations in this area, in the context of preserving the existing character of the neighborhood, its quality of life, its history, while supporting more services, retail, and job opportunities. I co-wrote a study of Witherspoon Street corridor several years ago, sponsored by Princeton Future and conducted by Philadelphia friend Brown and Keener. And it emphasized the need for the municipalities then to coordinate and focus on improving the infrastructure, such as utilities, traffic, et cetera. The study suggested reinforcing the existing zoning of mixed use, two floors of housing currently allowed over commercial. That's already in the zoning, both what was former borough and township. Rather than just enforcing this in-place residential business zoning as an option, define it as a preferred condition to satisfy the needs of the community and the area, and perhaps with compatible incentives. And lastly, I'm going to repeat that the Witherspoon-Jackson Development Corporation has been recertified as a nonprofit organization in the state of New Jersey to begin to creatively address dramatic increases in property taxes, threats to the neighborhood character and history, a proliferation of tear downs, speculative investment, and again, affordable housing in the neighborhood. We're looking for new members, for an active board, as well as an advisory board. Feel free to contact me, Hank Pennell, or Penny Carter, if you're interested. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm going to say some things that I've said in the past because I still am wrestling with many things that have gone on here. You know, I truly believe that maintaining the history in the community is very important. It's not only good for the community, it's good for our children, it's good for America. But I think there's been a divide here. And I think it's been misleading, in my opinion, for whatever it might be worth. I've sat here and listened to elderly people come up here and tell their heartfelt stories about living in the community, growing up, sitting on the porch, doing everything like that. I did the same in my community, but I never went back. But the important thing here is that I believe these people think that by making this an historic district, they're going to get certain tax breaks, certain incentives, something to keep them in their home. And it's not going to happen. Your own --
Okay, well, hold on. We got it. Please, please address council.
The elderly people came up here and spoke about their home.
You got it? Please address council.
I will. I will. So we have all of these elderly people coming here, speaking about their home and staying in it. You have problems here. I look at it from a business perspective. I get the echo paper, and you're still trying to figure out how to get rid of McMansions and how to change the zoning board. It just continues. And then you continue to make historic districts without having a plan. What is the plan? Tell me how that historic district is going to help all the people and maintain the history of that community. I have yet to be able to see it. Your own board here wrestles with vernacular homes. There is no vernacular in our -- every home is different, it's all different. So now we have to have a front porch or something, or the setback. We have wrestled with, they wrestled with whether they should change it from a historic society, a historic district, to something else. I was at that meeting. So there's a lot of conflict on this. What really is this? I'm sorry, I didn't hear this gentleman's comment at the very end, but early on, they said that they wanted to develop the street and bring revenue down that street. And you know what? At the very end, the vice committee said taxes are going up. And everybody keeps on pushing it down. I said, maybe I can't do fundamental math, but if you knock down a $400,000 house, it's going to be a million-dollar home, and you're going to reassess it. And you know who's going to win this battle? It's what she just said right before. All the builders are going to win because they get a 20% grant or tax or something to fix this place up. What are you giving to the homeowners? What are you doing for the homeowners to protect this neighborhood? I haven't seen anything. And there are other places in the country where the cities and the townships and the boards have done this for people. And that's my biggest problem, because I have nothing against this. Preserving the history of the African-American community is great, part of the Italian community, part of the Irish community. It's all great. But tell me how you're going to get it done. And I don't see a plan coming from the board because you still have the same issues in other areas of this borough. Just drive down the street, they knocked down a house, it's now listed for $1.2 million. Now, if you can tell the people in this room that you're not going to raise taxes on them, that's fantastic, but I'm not sure that's going to happen. So at the last meeting here is what I asked. We have approximately 400 units in this community, 390-some. Forty percent of them are rentals. That leaves 160 units that are rentals. Who owns them? And is there a block of any one builder or developer that owns them? Because if that is, that should be a signal to what's going to happen. They're going to come in here, and your zoning board's going to open up the floodgates because you were already warned by architects and builders at the last meeting that there are no concrete zoning issues that they can't beat probably. And once that happens, this community is going back the way it is. These people will not even recognize their home, their district, in 10 years. It will all be gentrified. So you need to have a plan. Second of all, you said you were going to answer all the questions. I'm still waiting for an answer. Last meeting, you asked what happened in the rest of the historic district, what happened to the taxes and everything. And the tax guy must have told you, well, we can't figure it out. Well, he gave me that same information two months before you asked for it. Has anything happened since then? I can't believe you can't figure it out. Can't be that difficult. We'll probably get some smart kid from Princeton to figure it out for us. So what is the plan? And tell me, how are you not going to raise taxes? Tell me who owns this property. What is going to happen?
Okay. Thank you.
I want an answer.
Okay. Well, thank you. The time is up a while back, so I just want to make sure we get a chance to hear from everybody.
You have not answered one question to these people.
Sir, excuse me. I had this sign up about two minutes ago. You paid absolutely no attention to it. Several other speakers, pro and con, have paid no attention to it. All you're doing is cheating other people who want to speak out of an opportunity to speak before it gets late, and we're all very tired.
Well, I'm more than glad to stay here to whatever it takes. So you?
I do want to clarify what the tax assessor said, Neil Snyder, and I believe it was, we had a report on it at our last work session too, which is the question is, if you make a district, you put a historic designation on a neighborhood, are the property values likely to go up as a result or down as a result? And essentially, the answer is, when you do the research and look at the studies, there are studies that say the property values will go up, there are studies that say the property values will go down, there are studies that say the property values will stay the same. And so for us to make a prediction, it's virtually impossible to say. I mean, we do know, right now, doing nothing, the property values are going up pretty dramatically. I mean, we do know, right now, doing nothing, the property values are going up pretty dramatically. So, we've seen that, and we just, we can't predict the future. So that was what was said at the last meeting. It wasn't that he was going to be getting back to us. He's done the research, and it was inconclusive. Do you want to add something?
The only thing I would add, the only thing that I would add is, it's very difficult to make that conclusion, because there are so many other factors that are involved. And you really can't go to, and really pull out the fact that, is it the historic district? Is it economic conditions? There are so many factors that we cannot make draw that conclusion.
You know, there was one other, setting aside all the opinion, which I'm going to take at face value from Mr. Carnavale, there was one fact he asserted, which I'd also seen in email, and I don't know whether it's true or not, and I want, I think it might be helpful for public comment to get clarified, and that is, he said that owners who rent their property out get a tax rate that owners who are homeowners and occupy the property in a historic district do not. And is that, does anybody know whether that is in fact accurate? I've seen that printed, do you, do you know the answer to that?
Did you come to the mic if you know the answer? And identify yourself for the, for Robert Von--
I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. There is a federal program, which if a building has historic designation, there can be a tax write-off for commercial buildings, for rental buildings. It does not apply to homeowners. The state of New Jersey, there have been many attempts to get through legislation, which would give similar benefits to residential owners. Everyone has been vetoed by the governor.
Okay, so just, just so I'm really clear, if I, if an owner rents out their property, they qualify for the break, but if an, if an owner lives in the property, they don't?
Right. It's specifically, it's a federal program, and it involves federal taxes, not local taxes.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to invite up the next group of speakers, and I want to reiterate Mr. Miller's request that people look at the time. We do have a lot of people here who, who want to speak, and respect, do your best to respect the three minutes, and also, I would ask everybody here to respect who's speaking, and give them the courtesy of listening quietly. All right, so I'd like to invite up Dozier Hammond, Daniel Harris, and, is that Marcia? Marcia, with pretty cursive writing. Come on up.
Long mayor and council, my name is Dozier Hammond, 87 Way Avenue. As I stated before, I'm here in support of the historic district. I do think that there are concerns that are legitimate about property values, et cetera, but my concerns about property values are right now, without a historic district, and the fact that the teardowns and the expansion, over-expansion of houses in my neighborhood are driving up property values, and causing taxes to rise. A little bit of mention was made before about the tax reevaluation having an impact on the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood where I live, and this is only continuing as the overdevelopment of the neighborhood goes ahead. I don't think this is a total solution for it. I do think we need to look at zoning, we need to look at ordinances about teardowns in general, not only in my neighborhood, but throughout Princeton. A number of the meetings I've gone to, not only here, but in front of, in front of other boards have mentioned this as, as a real problem. But I do think this is a step in the right direction. It is not perfect. The process has been somewhat complicated, but I do feel it is something that needs our support, needs to go forward. But we do need to do a lot more to try to stop the overdevelopment of my neighborhood, but also Princeton as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of council, first of all, I'd like to apologize to all of you, in particular Mr. Simon, for having spoken out of turn from the floor. I would also like to correct, in my view, a view expressed earlier about the quality or the balance of sentiment expressed by the general population at the meeting on November 30th, 2015, when the Wise Group gave their report. It was my sense that the balance really was much closer to 80/20 rather than 60/40, 80 percent at least being in favor of the Wise Report and historic designation. Mr. Kilgore is left. I want to thank him for having asked for his exemptions ahead of time, rather than using other practices, which, the rest of which us were not privy to. And I would ask Princeton council to establish standards and procedures for dealing with those requests for exemptions or subtractions from the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, so that all of us can know which properties are under discussion. As you know, the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District Group has a steering commission or committee on part of it, so you can filter things through me if you like. But as part of Mr. Simon's request for transparency, I really think that this is essential as we go forward with the process. Mr. Kilgore has asked indeed that numbers 292, 94, 92, and 94 be removed from, from the historic district. They are, in fact, designated as contributing properties, both by the Wise Commission and by the HPC, as you know. I did an onsite inspection over the last weekend, and they are, in fact, 1920s houses from a Sears Roebuck, Sears Roebuck catalog. They are, in fact, unique in Princeton. One of them has an original porch, and one of them also has original stained glass. You can look for yourselves. I believe that is number 294. So if we are making, you know, I don't know what to call them, counter requests at this point, I certainly request that those numbers be reinstated as, as we go forward with the process. I am concerned also that Mr. Soler's memorandum to Mr. DeShield on March 2nd, which is included in the packet, the agenda packet, referred to the removal of, quote, "The three lots occur along the northern end of Witherspoon Street. These were not identified by block and lot, so it was impossible for anybody looking at the maps attached to know which they were. I could have known in advance which they were." Thank you. I am also concerned with design standards. Anybody who wants to know what they are, they find them in Consolidated Ordinance 24T- hyphen 44. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, council, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm Marcia Winston, I live in Ewing, New Jersey. I was born and raised here in Princeton. My family has lived here forever. I have family still here and friends. Shirley Satterfield has shared so much valuable information on the historic contributions from African-Americans who lived here. From a personal perspective, it is just so, so important to have an area that can be linked back to African-Americans from way back to the present, so that our children, and then all of us whose memories may be fading, can look and say, "I remember that," or "Listen to what happened there. Look at that." It's important that we have some type of representation. So as I said, from a personal perspective, I am truly in favor of the historic district, and hope that it goes through, and that we all can come together as one accord to enjoy it, to learn from it, to share. Thank you.
Kip Cherry, John Heilner, and Tom? Or Tony? I think it's Tom.
Kip Cherry, 24 Dempsey Avenue. I want to start out by saying that if I didn't believe that this would help with evaluations of the neighborhood, I would not be so supportive. I truly believe that there will be fewer teardowns, and that there will be fewer McMansions constructed in the neighborhood, that the construction will be within scale under the supervision of the Historic Preservation Commission. So I truly believe it will have a mollifying effect on the neighborhood, and as I said, I would not be so supportive if I didn't think that was true. I also would like to say that, surprisingly as it may seem, when I was born here in this town, it was a segregated town, and I'm not that old. So we need to remember, you know, where we've come from, and where we need to go, and what our legacy is that we're trying to preserve. I also want to mention that Witherspoon Street, which is known as African Alley, is the heart of the Witherspoon Historic District, Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, and there are some 15 historic sites along the spine of Witherspoon Street. I look forward to the creative development of Witherspoon Street, one that maintains an historic fabric and scale while creating new ratables. I think there are great opportunities here for good architectural design that recognizes the bones of the original historic structures and the stories those old bones represent. I want to mention also how pleased I am with the adaptive reuse by architect Josh Cinder of the Masonic Temple in the neighborhood on McLean Street. This multi-unit structure is a wonderful meld of good preservation design and respectful creative design to meet the requirements of contemporary living. I'd also like to note that, as was mentioned, our downtown is one large historic district, and it is working very well. And it is handsome. And the reason I think it is as handsome as it is, is because of the oversight of the Historic Preservation Commission. I can say this because I have sat in on a number of project reviews by the HPC. I can say categorically that, in my view, in each case, the HPC has been responsive to the applicant, and cooperative in meeting the applicant's goals while still guiding the applicant to preserve the historic fabric of our districts. And this is paying off. We have a downtown that is the envy of every town in New Jersey, if not in the entire United States. And I truly believe that's because it's an historic district. I'd also like to say that Type 2, as the district classification, has a good record. Of the 19 historic districts we currently have, four districts are currently Type 2: Jugtown District, the Bank Street District, Mercer Hill District, and the Central Business District. Witherspoon Jackson District would be the fifth of that Type 2. Finally, I'd like to say that it's critical that an area that's an historic district be contiguous and continuous. That is, all the structures within the district need to be under the oversight of the HPC, and any changes need to be made in the context of the historic nature and architecture of the neighborhood. The porches, the roof lines. So if you ignore that, you end up with a mess, quite frankly, and worse than Swiss cheese, you end up with something that's even worse than if you did nothing at all. So that's why it's so important to have one contiguous district. Thank you very much.
John Heilner, Library Place. I'd like to thank the council for moving these proposals forward so quickly. As far as the boundaries are concerned, I think that's the main thing we're talking about tonight. I'm fine with the three commercial properties on Bayard Lane being removed. I don't think they add anything to the district. I am disappointed that the packet houses have been removed, at least two of them. I haven't checked them out the way Mr. Harris has, but he did a great job, and I think they really are historic and should be put back in. The integrity of the district really has to be kept intact. We really can't have people hacking away at it tonight, or going forward. We've already heard tonight people trying to do that. As far as the building at 205 Witherspoon Street is concerned, a woman who cannot be here tonight has provided some history on that. I don't know the date it was built, but that's probably in the Wise Report. But according to her, back as far as the 1940s, 205 Witherspoon Street was partly a grocery store. It became the Lux Dry Cleaners. It was the headquarters of the PAHR, that's the Princeton Association for Human Rights, in the early 60s. At one time, it was a bakery. It had an architect's office. It's got a lot of history in the area, and as we heard tonight, the facade, the exterior, is still within the time that's being considered. I think this whole question goes to the heart of the role of government. I think I've probably said this before. Will we let each transient individual, as we've begun to see tonight, come forward to get their own way, to chip away at what is a good idea overall? Or will the council act for the common good of Princeton as a whole? And if I have any time left, I'd like to yield it to Shirley Satterfield, who didn't quite get us all the way up or down Witherspoon Street. Maybe one minute.
First of all, I'd like to say that those people, I don't want to say that, people who move into Princeton in a community, the realtors should really let them know what that community, the history of that community, so that when they move in, they don't try to jeopardize what those of us are trying to do. There are developers, architects, and landlords who continue to make a profit in this community, knowing that they cannot wipe out noted homes in other communities. They continue to have teardowns, replaced by oversized structures that are not in keeping with the landscape and homes, that they have, that they see, say are welcome porches, but stated that they are attractive to this community. We are tired, we are worn, but we will not lose faith, and we will carry on, just as our ancestors did. Those of us who are descendants of generations of slaves, servants, laborers, domestic workers, educators, physicians, and government employees, will continue to honor their presence and struggle in a town that has continually turned a blind eye, and has failed to appreciate all the contributions that made Princeton the town that it is. To all of those who are making a profit from this community that was built on the labor of African-Americans, Italian-Americans, and Irish families, I want you to remember this: You may destroy, you may destroy our homes and bring greed to this community, but you will never erase our rich history and generations of our presence in Princeton.
Thank you.
How are you? My name is Tony Di Meglio, 52 Wynette Road. Been living in Princeton 35 years, raised six children, through the school system, proud to be here. Very excited about what we're trying to do here. I don't believe the avenue we're taking is right. We need to preserve this area. I'm a realtor, maybe the only one able to say that in this room this evening, and I must tell you, every home that I have sold for any person in this town, in this neighborhood, has always said to me, "Thank you. Thank you for letting me realize my dream, by letting me have this money that now I can retire." They're not being forced out of their homes. We're not knocking on doors and chasing people out. We're making dreams come true. You could see what Lou Barber did with 7 Lidle Street. My idea of what this historic society, this area is, I love the idea. I think, as mentioned before, there are very particular buildings that need to be maintained and preserved. Taking the entire neighborhood in one particular lump absolutely serves nothing. My opinion is, the absolute mission of this council, the mayor, is not to worry about what the color of the buildings are, but more about the diversity of the neighborhood, and how we maintain it and build it up. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Ian Neiman, and then, can I just give a show of hands of anybody who didn't sign who'd like to speak? You just, why don't you two come and speak next, and then, and then we'll get to Hendrix after.
Ian Neiman, Alexandria Street. I didn't plan to make these remarks. I'm speaking in favor of historic designation for the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, and I'd like to express a personal stake in that historic designation. I grew up in the borough, and was one of the European-American children who had the good fortune to go to Quarry Street School when it was still under the principalship of Mr. Waxwood, or as I know, we should have called him Dr. Waxwood. And I have very, very warm and, and comfort-- And I have very warm and comforting memories of how safe and how secure Mr. Waxwood made all of us feel in that school. It was a wonderful experience, and white Princeton children benefited from it. I'm sorry that I saw the film about integrating the Princeton schools, according to the Princeton Plan, that it was hard on African-American children who had to go to Nassau Street School, which wasn't quite as welcoming to them as Quarry Street School was to me and my brother, as we walked across Bayard Lane to get there every day. So I want to suggest that the neighborhood has historic qualities, not just for the people who live there, although it's remarkable. I think I know four people in Princeton who live in the homes they grew up in, and three of them are here tonight. I also live in a historic district, and I want to testify that it's not a particularly onerous thing. We made a renovation in our house, also on the Mercer Hill Historic District, which is also, I just learned tonight, a Type 2 district, and we went ahead and did some renovations and went through the Historic Preservation Review Committee, and it was pleasant and easy. And I often think that the people who've moved into the denser neighborhoods of Princeton are like people who go to a movie theater where you know the film is going to be very, very crowded, and instead of finding a seat with nobody in front of you and putting your coat over it and hoping that it will stay empty, I think the strategy of those of us who've moved into Princeton is to find somebody short and sit behind them. I like living in a place where I know that, you know, my neighbor is never going to build in addition a third story that's going to overlook my backyard and diminish its privacy. I really appreciate living in a central area of Princeton, especially in a historic district, and I recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Brooks, I'm the pastor of Mount Pisgah, and I live at 10 McLean Street. And we are here today because the zoning board has let the district down by allowing monstrosities in the middle of a neighborhood and taking away the decor that has been there. And so now you're trying to squeeze us into this small area when the African-American history starts at Nassau Street and goes down to the bottom of Witherspoon Street. And so to now want to make us look like Swiss cheese is even more of an atrocity. And so I say that we should leave the map, as the Wise people have presented it here today, with both sides of Birch and both sides of Witherspoon, and allow this district to move forward and have a history here in Princeton that the African-Americans deserve. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Francis Dean Boyer Jr. I live at 194 Birch Avenue in one of Rainbow Houses next to a monstrosity that was built a few years ago that I have to look up to every day. But every time I come to these meetings, I always say I'm not going to say anything. And every time I come, I get so upset. And the truth of the matter is, I don't believe that you guys will make the proper decision. And that's a shame to sit in the audience and feel that way. And, you know, my children, I'm a fourth-generation Princetonian. My children grew up in this community. My daughter even taught at the Princeton Charlie School for 10 years. And neither one of these young people who are college-educated want to live in Princeton. That says something about our community, that young professionals that grew up in this community don't see a value of being in this community. My daughter left the school and went to Wilmington to teach. So, you know, it takes special people to make decisions for other people. And unfortunately, I don't feel that you care enough, because if you did, how can you have 19 other historic communities and you got to fight over one historic community? That means that Einstein was more important than the guy who worked at a restaurant? His house is more important than the person who did the same thing he did, is buy his home and try to keep it? And we got to wrestle with this thing about making this community historic. I mean, it really upsets me, and I'm not even sure I want to stay in Princeton much longer. I own two homes on that street that were passed down to me. They were passed down for a reason, because my parents wanted me to be here. Now my kids don't want to be here. I don't know if it's necessary for me to even be here. But this is the thing, I heard the gentleman, I think his name is Simon, say, being fair. Can you really be fair? And I know for a fact, if you lived on a street and you lived in a small home, and you give somebody permission to build a four-story home next to you, I know for a fact, don't even have to ask you the question, you're going to be upset about it. You are going to be upset about it. I would love to know where you guys live and ride down your street and see what's built next to you. My girlfriend lives in Colonial. If you know about that area, the buildings, they're tearing down homes, and they're building these mini mansions. Her neighbor built a mini mansion right next to her home. And the neighbors are embarrassed that she lives on that street, because now they say, "Hey, look at this house that's next to you. Looks like a servants' quarters." So this is what we face in Princeton, and I hope I'm wrong, that you guys don't have the ability to make the right decision. I hope I'm wrong. So God be with me.
Mayor, council, and Mr. DeShield. Thank you. It's kind of like coming up here to vote. Whether it's the popular opinion or not, I want to...
You should identify yourself for the record.
This is Chris Kinnegy from 147 Birch Avenue. Thank you. Whether it's 80 to 20, or 60 to 40, or whatever it is, I want to just state that thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and, even as an employee, to come represent my neighborhood and people who might be thinking the same way as I think and other people. Earlier, I've stated it, Mr. DiMeglio and Dr. Hamid said the same thing that I'm thinking, and that is, people should have the right to do what they want to do with their own houses. I agree that people should have the opportunity to have historic preservation, and if they want to be on the historic preservation site, they should be able to designate their house to be a historic site. They should have a plaque or a list or some kind of thing that says, "This is a historic site." And I'm not exactly sure that this is the best way to do it, but I think, speaking from my house, I don't want to have to come up in front of a historic preservation board and ask if I can put on shutters or paint my house or put an addition on. People should be able to do what they want to have, and if they want to have historic soap for themselves, they should be able to do that. Now, I'm a registered Democrat, thanks to Jenny, and Albert Hines was a strong Republican, and I'm sure that he would be against us having people tell him what he should do, what the government should do with his house. So, bring up Mr. Hines. I'm a very good friend of Mr. Hines. I was. Now, the other issue that I want to point out is that I've been in many of these houses through my rural engineering department, and they could use improvement. A lot of them could use improvement, you know, and maybe the way to do it would be to tear it down and put up something nice, but the methodology might be through a better sort of incentive and disincentive policy rather than a sweeping district. So I moved in here 20 years ago, and I'm happy to see that the neighborhood continues to evolve and change and improve, and I don't really want to see it frozen in a snapshot in time the way it is right today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hendrix Davis, 232 John Street, where I've lived for 33 years now, and because of the Witherspoon-Jackson Development Corporation, I am the owner of that property. I am here to speak in favor of the designation of the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood as a historic preservation district. I've done that before. At the very first meeting, I did have some questions that I think have been answered significantly or positively to my satisfaction that would allow me, as a homeowner, to know that I still retain property rights. They don't go away with the designation of this neighborhood as a historic district. I think it might be helpful for the experts and those that know the law to explain to people who have concerns how historic district designation is either trumped by or not trumped by, boy, did I say that word, twice? Superseded, that's a better word, superseded by zoning. It might be very helpful for Lee to give us a little understanding of that, because I think, again, maybe there are some things within the zoning regulations that need to be addressed as well, as you're looking not only at Witherspoon-Jackson but throughout the town that will help moderate, if you will, the impact of redevelopment of distinct particular properties in relationship to existing properties. So if we could get to that point, at some point, maybe have a little tutorial or something that could help persuade some of the concerns that property owners have. I do have a concern, though, for arbitrarily taking parts of the district out, particularly things that are contributing or that are designated as contributing to the district. And I'd be very careful about that. I'd want to know what the rationale is for giving any particular distinct properties the opportunity to exit the historic district designation without, you know, knowing what the basis of that decision or request is. So someone said earlier, and I'm sorry for going over a little bit here, that that's already been decided. Well, no, it has not been decided because you have not taken that action. So let's be very clear about that. Then the last thing, as I leave, just non-contributing, does that mean that it is just non-contributing? Or does that mean that it is not a part of the district? Okay, so it's a part of the district. Okay, so, all right, and you don't, thank you.
Hi, Craig O'Shea, 52 Birch. I just wanted to add my voice to the support for adoption of the ordinance declaring Witherspoon-Jackson a historic district. When I first moved to Princeton, I lived in the Lawrence Apartments Graduate Housing off of Alexander. I didn't honestly think very much of the town at the time, I'm sad to say. It was only when I moved to the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood that I actually first got involved in the community and met, you know, tons of wonderful people, and anything that I can do to see that preserved and, you know, lend my voice to it, I'd love to see happen. I think it's important to consider the overall benefit to the community over individual interest when considering an ordinance like this, and, you know, I'd like to see this move forward. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to council, and as I said, we have about, I think we should stop at 11. We have an hour to figure out where we want to go from here, and like I said at the beginning, this will have several more steps. So if, in the course of listening, you have a comment to make, I'd ask that you hold it, and then you can make it at the subsequent council meeting. So I guess I'll invite Mr. Solo back up, and there are still some questions that we still need to answer about the map and whether we want to leave it as is, whether we want to entertain changes to it. So we can go through the different properties that have been brought up, if that makes the most sense. So, Ms. Kremmeler?
You mean the properties...
There were some that we discussed initially...
Last time compared to what's on now?
No, I mean, there were some that we discussed at around 9 o'clock or 8:30 before we opened up the public hearing. So, well, first, I believe there's agreement that we are going to remove, and I think they already are removing, those properties on Bayard.
Right, they're already out.
They're already out. All right.
I think that we would start with where the ordinance is drafted, and we go through the ones where concerns have been raised. I mean, I'll sort of start the bidding. I mean, I think we've already gone through, I think we've appropriately considered and included those properties that are, but I think for the record, we should make sure we go through them, because, I'll be honest, I felt like some people were laying a groundwork for lawsuits and lawyers coming ahead, and so I think I want to make sure that we're very clear for the record about all the process that has been followed, because, you know, I think we have followed appropriate process, and we've been very clear that these are conforming properties. They should fit within. They've been considered by the Wise Report. They've been considered by professional staff. They've been considered by the HPC. But I think we ought to maybe just go through and do that formally, so that we, you know, if we do vote to include them, which I, I mean, I would vote against removing them, I want to make sure that the record is clear that they got the proper consideration.
Okay. So why don't we start with the 201, 205 Witherspoon Street, which we had discussed earlier? And I can't remember, somebody from the public was describing, I think it was John Heilner, was describing the various uses of the 205 building, so...
And was proper notice, I mean, what was the concern about the notice? And can we go over notice, what notice was given?
There were a number of notices that were given. HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, took the lead in doing the legwork on the designation. I believe they held one or two meetings where notice was given, and it was based on the original survey. Then they had a follow-up meeting sometime November or December where the district was enlarged, and they provided notice at that work session. For your work session, a few weeks ago, we made certain that everybody that was in the district was notified, so everybody got notice about that. The next public hearing will also have notice to all the property owners as required by law and those within 200 feet. So there's been a fairly good notice. There's been very good press coverage also, so I think most people know what we're doing. I think some of the difficulty you've heard is, this is the process. It's a little messy. People have the right to come in and say, "Would you..." People have the right to come in and say, "Would you consider taking out my property because?" And you have to evaluate that, there's no right or wrong to that. You've heard a lot of good reasons why everything should be in, you've heard some reasons why certain properties should come out. I can't give you, there's no crystal ball, I can't give you a yes or no, I think you just have to do it based upon the testimony that you hear tonight, and we'll have another hearing in a few more weeks at the public hearing. But as I guess Heather had indicated, the map before you removed the three non-contributing properties along Bayard, we talked about those at the work session, they were taken out. At that work session, there was the request to take out the three additional properties owned by the packet, so they were removed as well. As you can see from the map, two of those are labeled contributing, one is non-contributing, they are on the edge of the district as rationale. You know, they do contribute, you heard a little bit about the Sierra's Robux Homes. I'm not an expert on historic, so I can't give you that answer, you know, we could look to Elizabeth or Julie maybe to come back and provide you more, but I don't think there's a crystal ball, it's your call at this point, I think.
But we're not going to talk about any properties that are not on the edges, because I think everyone agrees we don't take out any that are not on the edges.
Yeah, I think there's agreement, but we were contacted by someone on John Street who wanted their property out, that backs onto Stanworth.
Right, but that's really not --
Well, that's an edge.
That's technically an edge.
Technically an edge, if you back onto Stanworth. So, I guess, do we, would we have to go through the properties tonight, or would we want to see in total what we're dealing with? I don't have a --
It depends on how many there are, if I could just jump in. If you don't make an amendment tonight and at the next meeting, at the public hearing, you want to change them, I think that's going to be a substantive change and you start the process all over again, so if we can get through tonight at least what you want to have at the public hearing, and if you're amending the map tonight.
Maybe a better word is --
If you're worried about the hour and you want to come back and get some input from HPC as well, you can.
A better word is corner, because --
Well, there's three properties I have on the list that have been raised. Unless other people have more. So, I can read off the ones that I have that have questions have been raised about, and if other people have more, we'll add it to the list. So, there's 201, 205 Witherspoon, 242 John Street, and 284, 286 Witherspoon.
Yeah, so, with respect to 201 and 205, what I thought we heard today was 201, there's no question, leave it in, just 205 is the question.
Right, and I would say for council, there's a really great resource if people haven't already looked at it, which is the survey that was done, so it's PrincetonBuildings.info, and you can see pictures of each of the homes and a description.
The other request we heard, Mayor, and I think we should also just ask the question, is whether to reinstate the packet buildings, and I'm just throwing that for completion, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it.
He's asking about reinstating the packet buildings.
There were a number of people who requested that we also reinstate the packet buildings, so, just in terms of going through the list for thoroughness, that's also on the list.
Okay, so then there's four items unless anybody has anything else.
Could I add? Yeah, I would, I'm going to add one other property back in for consideration, and that is the Momo property. HPC did not recommend it, but it was recommended by Y's, was it not? And I, Mrs. Satterfield mentioned it tonight in her talk about Witherspoon, and I drove by it today and just had a feeling about it, and I don't know for any good reason other than being a little bit arbitrary that we said, "Oh, we wouldn't cross the street." So, let me just toss that out there for you to think about. I don't necessarily feel very strong, but, you know, it's an important building on the corner, and it does have the bakery and the Cuba, whatever the Taste of Cuba, whatever that, the cigar store, it's that structure, and I think then the property on the corner and what could be built there would be something probably quite large if it's torn down. So, let me just throw that out.
Okay. All right, so, can we start?
Actually, could I also just throw a couple of thoughts as we're having this discussion? One is, at the end of Birch, there are three vacant lots, so could somebody explain how those would be treated under the historic district if they're at the point where -- There's three green, doesn't that mean vacant? At the end of Birch, near 206.
So, what, in a historic district, what happens if somebody wants to build a house?
Which would be the same answer for all the other vacant lots, but these are on the border, I'm asking the question.
Well, it's the same process we follow now, and it partially would answer Hendricks' question. The historic district is an overlay zone, that's how it's treated. So, there are lot area setback requirements, FAR requirements that would have to be met. If the district is adopted, the individual would have to also go, not only come to the planning board or zoning board, depending on if they needed variances, but go to the HPC for a review based on the criteria to construct a new house, and they would review and evaluate it based on those criteria to see if it fits into the neighborhood. So, you know, it's no different than, the bulk standards are the same as they are today, the difference is with a new, with a historic district, it gets a review by HPC and they would comment based on the design. Typically, the zoning board and planning board do not get involved in the design of single-family homes. We regulate bulk standards and the floor area ratio and those kind of things, but not so much whether it's a colonial, or if it has a front porch, or if it has a certain type of windows, but that is something typically the HPC would be looking at.
Elizabeth, were you going to add anything to that?
That's correct. The things that they would probably be looking for with those vacant lots is to kind of have a continuation of the streetscape, which is the distance of the structure to the street, which is consistent with what's already out there within the street. If there are some design elements, if they have porches, if they have, you know, a certain type of roof line, if there is enough of that design element within the street, within that area, they would probably be looking for something that's somewhat compatible with that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I mentioned at the work session, I just wanted to, I don't think it got much traction, but I'm just going to ask the question and see if I misunderstood, which was, I expressed a concern about the process, and suggested that maybe for the properties that were added by Y's, where the first notices that went out actually told people they weren't going to be in the district. It was only the later notice after the district was drawn out that it said they would be, whether those should be opted in.
They got notice that said they were not?
The first notice said, "You're contiguous with the district, but you're not in it." That's what the, correct me if I've got this wrong.
The first notice was within the study area, and they were sent out to all the neighbors that were within that study area. Then when they started to do their research, because then they start to look outside of it, and then when they came back to the HPC to show us what they had come up with, then we sent a notice out to those neighbors in addition to property owners 200 feet from those new limits.
And that's the same thing Mr. Kilgore told us at a previous meeting, which is that in the original notice, his properties looked like they weren't going to be in it. Right, and then it was in the later, after the boundary was expanded and the study was being reviewed for completion, was the first time you got a notice?
I didn't get a notice, Mr. Rice.
Could you speak at the mic, I'm sorry?
I said, when I talked to Mr. Wise after I, you know, was informed about the expansion of the district, I asked him whether people who were added to the district afterwards, did you give notice that they were going to be reviewed? And he said, "No notice went out when we expanded the district to notify people like me," because I said I would have met with him, talked to him, and reviewed my properties.
So, I'm sorry, how did you find out then?
Well, you know, from articles, because I saw the map early on.
But you did not receive a notice from the town saying you're --
No, no.
All right, and that's consistent with actually what we've heard from at least two or three other property owners.
But not consistent with what we heard from me. Right, but not only that, but if I recall, when you had come to one of the meetings, you had said that you had seen a notice afterwards, but you weren't really sure what it meant. And I can give you a stack like this, of notices that were either returned to us from the postal service because it couldn't be delivered, or it was vacant, and it wasn't because the notice wasn't sent out, it was just that no one was there to take it.
I can clarify also, I think the original notice went out to the packet, we discovered that, and it was addressed to the packet paper, not to Mr. Kilgore, and it didn't get to him, because we checked our records, so notice went out to the property owner as listed on the tax assessor's records. Since then, I think we changed that so that he was getting direct notice. I hope that's what the intent was anyhow. But, so, the property owners did get notice for the, which, what meeting was it at HPC that was expanded?
I think that we had two, right? Well, we had the 30th one. There was a notice that went out for the work session, and I believe you also did a robocall for the work session, right?
Correct, I know there was notice for the work session. I thought there was also notice to an expanded list for one of the HPC working sessions.
Yes, with HPC, that's right.
Right, so the first notice indicated something else, and then subsequent notice, they were included. So, then the question I just had for my colleagues is whether you all feel that that rises to the level that we should do something special with those properties, like have it be an opt-in? That's what I had suggested last time, didn't seem to get much traction. I'm not pushing it hard, but I'm asking the question just to make sure I'm understanding what people are thinking.
Ms. Kremmeler?
No, 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 I still think, I think they did get notice twice, and so I don't think we should change how we're dealing with them based on the notice.
And with the notice that was given to the expanded district and 200 feet beyond, there was also a map that was included in there, which showed actually pretty much like this, except for it was the one that was provided by a Y's preservation delineation.
Ms. Howard?
So, let me propose, I mean, I would just start with 201 and 205 and say that it seems to me, I was looking at the survey, we heard 201, there doesn't seem to be disagreement about the historic nature of that building. According to the consultant, both are conforming. I'm just looking at the survey for 205, it says specifically that the windows are historic, and I think Mr. Heilner has laid out all the historic and contributing uses, so it's not just that the buildings are contributing in an architectural sense, but also that the uses of the building are very relevant to the fabric of the community, which we're trying to recognize as well. So, I think 201, 205, if we establish that the, that the notice, I'm comfortable with that sufficient notice was added, they're both conforming according to our outside experts, it was considered by HPC and professional staff, and the survey establishes that, I'm comfortable continuing to include them and recognizing that we've, you know, we've heard from the constituent who's raised a concern, but I feel like the, we've addressed the concerns and I would like to keep them in, just sort of, I think that's the analysis we should go through, is my sense, but I'm open to amendments on that, but I think that, I feel like that's established, and especially since it was a lawyer coming, not the actual property owner, where I felt like it was clearly about establishing grounds for a lawsuit, I think I wanted to be clear that we've followed all the processes we've followed.
Right, and I believe on that property too, that's correct, he was not the property owner, but I think that he's interested in actually --
That's who the letter was from, was from the lawyer.
It was from the lawyer, that's correct.
Is there any disagreement or consensus with Ms. Howard on that?
Consensus here.
For 205?
Well, yeah, I have a larger concern, I think you're right about that generally, but I guess, and I support a historic district, don't everybody start screaming, but I do have some concerns about Witherspoon generally, the street, and when I recommended that council consider it the corridor two years ago or whenever, when we started to talk about it, I, and I guess I'd be interested in following up with Yaina on this, when we had our tour with Shirley and she was talking about the businesses that were interspersed throughout the corridor of Witherspoon, that resonated with me. I grew up in a neighborhood where you could run around and go to a store next door, and the street in many ways is not in very good shape, the infrastructure is not in good shape, the sidewalks are all, in many places, they're sort of heaving due to the trees, and the trees aren't in very good shape, and I, I just have a concern that for Witherspoon Street, is the historic designation going to do what we hope it will do? Would we get, you know, can we get people who are interested in those properties who are, you know, might also be interested in doing the type of work that would restore the streetscape to its earlier splendor? I don't know, I just have that question, and so I think you're right about those properties, but just in the larger sense, you know, I hope that we maybe could expand the business corridor down Witherspoon in a way that would make a lot more of the community walkable, you know, that maybe the upside of Avalon Bay will be that those 280 people or, you know, whoever lives in there will create enough demand for a coffee shop or a bagel shop, or, you know, the kind of things that bring a community together more up on this end of town. And so, I, oddly, I think, Yaina, you and Mr. Kilgore expressed some of the same concerns. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out, I think you're right on the property. I think generally, I'm, have another concern that people have a lot of hope about the historic district, that, you know, it in and of itself is not going to do what we want it to accomplish. You know, it still won't protect from tear downs, it won't protect, it won't provide a forum for the history to be saved, so I think we do have to have a multi-pronged approach, and this may be the beginning of it, this may be the start of it, but, so that's what I want to say about Witherspoon Street. I would like to encourage that repopulating of businesses in a positive way for the community, and I just want to think about whether a historic district does that.
Can I just respond to that, if I could? There was some informal conversation with the HPC, we talked about that, because obviously this neighborhood really did kind of, were self-contained and sustaining, where they did have their own services, shops, salons, and things like that, so I think that that's something that they, that we would encourage, you know, because it's still the neighborhood, even though it's evolving, to have that opportunity to be able to provide some of those businesses, small businesses in a very small neighborhood, I think that would be in keeping with the historic integrity and being able to provide, I mean, you've got Avalon Development right down the road, I mean, it's going to be an opportunity, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it is important to remember that it is zoned currently for mixed, for business, so it already has that going for it, and I feel that the historic district could actually help that, because it would be a cuter, nicer street. If shops move in, they won't, it won't be like a Walgreens or, you know, that, or if it is a Walgreens, it'll be like a nice-looking one. Right. Like, at least our 7-Eleven has a really little sign. So, I think a historic district doesn't preclude a thriving Witherspoon Street, but I do agree with you that I hope that happens, and I think it would, I think we, if we can do more to make that happen, I'd like to know what we could do, because, and maybe Avalon Bay will make it happen.
You know, there's absolutely no question in my mind about the fact that Witherspoon Street as a street deserves to be in the historic district, just as Route 27, the King's Highway, deserves to be as historic district, Witherspoon Street deserves to be a historic district for exactly the same reason. Being in a historic district does not preclude improvement, it does not preclude straightening out the sidewalks, taking away the sidewalks that are heaved as a result of tree roots, it does not preclude removing trees that are dead, decaying, and replacing -- dead, decaying, and replacing the trees. It does not improve, does not preclude the improvement of Witherspoon Street to make it a more attractive thoroughfare. It belongs in the historic district. It is historic. And Ms. Butler is right. And I think a number of us have had conversations about this before. The street itself does need improvement.
Okay. So, I think I'm hearing for 205 Witherspoon, that we want to keep that in the historic district.
I can do the next one, too, if you want.
Okay. And then, well, there was two, I don't know if I have the-
242 John, 242 John Street?
Or do we want to stay on Witherspoon?
Oh, okay.
And do, is it 2, 282 and 284?
284.
And 286? Witherspoon? And can you point that out again, where that is on the map? That's on the corner of Birch?
So, so is there another property north of it on Witherspoon?
I think so. Yes, there is. I'm uncertainly screwing 286.
I believe it's just the one lot.
At the corner?
Yeah, there is a property between that and the others.
There's, so, I'm, I'm-
Put the map back up on the-
Yeah, I think he's working on the map. I'm looking at the survey here, and there's a 282, 284, but there's, and then there's a 288, but there's no 286.
Okay. So, I think it's just the one property.
Okay.
And that would be this unusual, in blue, this right here. So, that you have, there are three properties owned by the packet, the, there's that pinkish type. And then there is a small lot in between that and 282, 284, 6. I'm not certain on the numbers. But it would be this lot.
Yes. The letter from the constituent is 282, 284, and 286. And I'll just start the discussion, that I think they're all on the, we've established sufficient notice went to these owners on the edge, and that those are conforming according to the map.
Right. And on the survey, it says that it was built likely around 1925.
So, do you want to use the same arguments as before? Using the same sort of rubric for analysis, I would, I would support in keeping in. I think we, you know, we've considered the request, but it is appropriately within the designation as drafted.
All right. Is there consensus for keeping it in, or?
Well, let me just talk about this. So, they're right across, he's right across from one of the old hospital buildings, right? I mean, and what's on the corner, I guess there's a house north, on the south side of Birch.
Yes, there was a-
So, 282 and 284, that's a dub, that's a duplex.
That's the two family, then there's a-
And then there's a small house that looks in-
To the north, yes.
-this repair. Yeah. And that's-
That is 288.
288. And that is in, or?
That's not, that's in.
That's in.
That's in, but not under consideration. That's-
That's not order unless we-
And then the next buildings are out.
Okay. Mr. Men, did you have?
I have no strong feelings on this one.
Okay. Leave it in? Okay. Okay. The consensus seems to be to leave that in. And then, we, should we talk about the packet buildings then, since we're in that area? So, those were, they're on that map, but they were taken out. And is there, right, is that the?
The map before you takes the three packet properties out.
Takes those out, right.
Actually, there are four. One was never included.
Okay. The white space there is what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
Up there, they're not. Up there, they're, they're the last three on-
Right. What I was referring to is the white space is actually the main packet building, the cinder block, yellow cinder block building where the warehouse and whatever it is.
What's in our packet.
And that was never included in any of the discussions. What's been taken out based on the work session would be the three lots heading south. So, you have the two blue ones and the pink one.
Okay. And is there a consensus to keep it as it is, or to put it back in?
I would prefer, I think, just to keep it the way it is. It's, my understanding was there was a little bit more division within the HPC as to those buildings to begin with. They're dangling off the end. They're not, it's hard to argue that they're core to the district. And I would, I would prefer to exclude them.
You know, if anybody's looking at Google at all, you can see that they also face the, kind of a parking lot and a, is that a, that gas station or former gas, you know, car service place?
Former gas station.
Yeah. So, they're not, it's not as if they have much of a neighborhood across from them. And it's the one, it's the non-contributing, the pink and the two purple, right, that we're talking about?
Okay. Okay. Well, there seems to be consensus to leave it as it was in our packet and to leave those out. Correct. Okay. Okay.
242 John.
Then, we can talk about 242 John, and-
I can speak to, I mean, I can read from the email from the constituent. But I think the key point is, I'm not sure exactly which purple it is, but it's about where Clay Street hits. It's a conforming property. It was in the, it was, sorry, contributing, thank you, contributing property. And the, one of the reasons given is, the house was constructed and historically occupied by Italians, so its significance for recognizing the contributions of black residents of the neighborhood is questionable. And I, I just think that doesn't, I think that doesn't, it doesn't reflect the report which, 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 you know, which recognizes the various contributions of different groups. And so, I appreciate the concern of this resident, but I think this clearly is, is appropriately within the, within the bounds.
Agreed.
Okay. So, there seems to be agreement on that, too. And then, the final property was, I'm not sure of the address, but the MoMA property that had been out, the Witherspoon Bright Company Building.
Yeah. I mean, the question about notice, Rob, is what worries me about that, because they don't-
They were noticed. In fact, they came to one of the HPC meetings, and there was a discussion about their property.
So, do they, do they want, I mean, are they going to object?
Well, they, they actually asked to have it eliminated, because they said that they would have originally have liked it in there, but that they felt that there was a lot of change already within the area. The new library, the new Elements building. And I think that they felt that they were just, just a few of them on the other side of the street. And they had wished that they were actually part of the district that had extended up to Where the Spoon, but it stopped at Hullfish Street. So, all those changes were able to be made. And that's, I mean, there was a bit of discussion with the HPC on that, because they were hoping for it, but they did kind of understand how it was kind of disconnected because of the changes right around it.
And again, I'll just volunteer. To me, it looks like it's disconnected, and I think the HPC's recommendation to leave it out is a sound one.
Yeah. I guess I reluctantly agree, because I do agree that it's a beautiful, I mean, it would be nice if we could preserve it, because it, I could just imagine something awful going there.
What is the zoning there with, for that?
It's part of the CBD zone.
Part of the CBD?
Yes.
So, but it's not in the historic district?
No, it is not. As Elizabeth was saying, that historic district ends at Hullfish.
So, if they tore it down, what could they, how high could they go there?
Well, I don't know what they could fit. Most of the downtown is limited by the ability to provide parking. Those are very tiny lots, as you can see from the map. We're talking in this general area. So, not a whole lot.
I think I would tend to agree with keeping it out, because I think it's very important that we, I mean, I have a lot of respect for the work that HPC did as the expert body. And so, I would be hesitant to overrule.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there's consensus to keep it out.
Yeah. It's a beautiful building, but I think it's a-
Right. It, I mean, I think I was there when they had the discussion. You know, it was just, by the end, you're sort of flipping a coin, do you cross Paul Robeson or not?
Okay.
I'm glad you brought it up, because it's good to talk about it, but in the end-
Well, I think as long as we were talking about properties that have been added and subtracted, I felt in fairness, we ought to run over it one more time.
So, it sounds like going over those five properties, not having to make any amendments than to the ordinance that was introduced?
I have just that one typo, if somebody could amend. I'm a little embarrassed, where in the first, whereas we have Birch Avenue to the south, and it should be the north.
Okay. So, would somebody like to amend the-
I'll amend.
-ordinance to correct the direction?
I'll make that amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second amendment.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Howard and seconded by Ms. Kremmeler. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. How-
On the amendment, yeah.
On the amendment. Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Kremmeler?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
And Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Okay. So, the ordinance is introduced at the beginning of this discussion. We just did that correction, and the, we'll be referring it to the planning board.
Can we, can we have a little more discussion on this? I mean, I think there are other considerations besides just the, those properties. Can we talk about that?
Sure.
Okay. Let me just throw something else out, as I've been thinking about this. HPC did not want to include the cemetery. But when I think about it, I think that that's such an important part of the story. And particularly, the, you know, entrances. And I just want to toss it out and see whether, again, we might have any reconsideration of including that cemetery because of its importance to the-
Well, I'd be interested, I think it's a great point. I'd be interested in hearing why it wasn't. Was it because there's no risk of it being developed, and that's why? I mean, what, what, what is its status? And so, what are the, yeah?
And also, what would kick in? Would you have to review?
If somebody's putting up a gravestone, would you have to review that?
No.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Robert von Zumbusch answer, if that's okay.
Yeah. Basically, there were several reasons. Actually, I brought up, particularly the colored section really should be part of the district, because it's part of the history. However, it was pointed out that, first of all, the national preservation effort basically generally discourages cemeteries unless they have unusual significance architecturally and so on. I do think that one could consider all of the Princeton Cemetery as a separate district, but not necessarily the Witherspoon District. The other thing was, the thought is that it's pretty well protected, and we really don't have to worry about it too much. And that getting involved, because when we talk about a cemetery, we're not talking about just a single ownership. There are ownerships of all the lot plots within as well, which creates a lot of problems and so on. So, that it's better to deal with that as a totally separate issue. I must admit that I do think that the significance of that colored cemetery is really important. I do think it's pretty well protected, however. So, I'm not too concerned about that.
What about the entrance of that, the colored section? I can hardly bring myself to say it. But what about the entrance, the separate entrances? That's kind of what I, in particular-
Yeah. I mean, I certainly think that, I certainly would not want to see that changed. But I do think it, we don't have to worry about it too much. I think it's pretty good heads. However, I would certainly encourage the thought of making the Princeton Cemetery as a separate district. That would, that would be a way of doing it.
We wouldn't get many objectors.
We might get a lot. But it still could be done, and no matter how many objectors, it's up to the municipality to be doing it.
Well, no, I'm joking. Yeah. Joe, maybe this is, this goes to your broader point about telling the story of the neighborhood, which doesn't end with just the boundaries that we might approve today, right? I mean-
Ms. Sauerfield's a member of the HPC, so with, is that, but you have to come up to the microphone to speak into the mic?
The cemetery is owned by the Presbyterian Church. And there, and I'm on the cemetery committee. And there is a brochure that tells of all the noted people who are in the cemetery. So, if we do anything as far as historic, we do have to go to the cemetery committee, which is at the Presbyterian, Nassau Presbyterian Church. So, and what is this about?
I just wanted to say, as a planning board member, the Presbyterian Church did come to talk about potentially using more intense development for, such as mausoleums and other forms of arrangements, stacking and the like, that would change the configuration of how tombs are either noted and commemorated. So, to say that you think it's cast in stone, literally, that may not be the case.
Yeah. It's called the Party, the Party Memorial. If you go down Witherspoon Street, you see these monoliths. That's, it looks like they're across from the Witherspoon Street Presbyterian Church. They're the new mausoleums. And if you're buried, if you want to be cremated, your ashes will be in that ground, and your name will be on those monoliths. Does that answer?
Thank you.
Well, is there anything else?
I do have, I've been thinking about this a lot. I do have something else to say on this. Since I was the liaison to historic preservation for three years, you know, we ask about the additional personnel that might be involved if we create a historic district. And I think in all fairness, we have to be realistic and transparent about that. Right now, you're looking at our, you know, historic preservation officer. She does not have administrative help. The packets for historic preservation meetings are enormous. She's doing all the administrative work. I don't see how we're going to add 400 properties to our inventory of historic properties and not think that we're going to need at least an administrative person and maybe, you know, someone else who can help with this, with this district. Many of these houses, I think we're being a little disingenuous to say, oh, you can change the door, and you can do this, and you can do that. I live in an old house, and I know that it's like pulling the thread on a sweater, because if you, you know, go to change the door of the house, that may seem simple, but then all of a sudden, many of these houses, you're probably not going to be able to go to Lowe's and buy a new door. They're probably not standard door sizes. You know, and then you're changing the frame, and then you, then you're in front of historic preservation pretty quickly. I don't think we can stick our head in the sand about what this means. I think it is definitely going to cost us, the municipality, more. We're going to, I feel like we're going to have to hire at least two people. And I think that it's going to cost the residents more. It just will. It takes longer. You're going to need more help if you have to go to HPC in some form or another. And, you know, when people were talking about the Taj House, we heard a lot about the exquisite architecture. But when we went to try to save that porch, we couldn't even save the porch. It was so rotted. We saved some architectural detailing. So, I think we need to be as honest with people as we can possibly be. This will probably drive up the cost of doing home repairs. It just will. We can still do it. That doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. And in some cases, I think I've said in the past, historic preservation has been very helpful in recommending different materials, materials that might be substituted, that would still meet the standards. They've been helpful. But I think we have to acknowledge that we're, there's an expense involved here. And it will be borne probably disproportionately by the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. Sorry.
Sorry. I thought, I thought you were wrapped up. There are many things we do up here that don't have a cost impact, like saluting the flag at the start of the meeting, or honoring people. But there are also many things that we do that ought to be done, or that we think ought to be done, but we believe they're not going to have much of a cost impact. But I think Ms. Butler is right. I think we need to realize that what we're doing, while we believe, or let me put it differently, while I believe we're doing the right thing and the moral thing to- add up when we do affordable housing, but they all add up. And incrementally, they're small, and sooner or later, they come home to roost in the bill that you get for your property taxes. So keep it in mind, when we talk about doing the right thing, and we all think it's the right thing to do, but we also think it's right to not increase property taxes, or maybe reduce property taxes. But as we move in the direction of doing what we believe is right, and Ms. Butler is right about this, we're putting an additional workload on the one individual who's probably going to need help as time goes on, it'll be reflected in the bill that you receive. So keep it in mind.
Mr. DeShale, did you want to?
One thing I do, in terms of additional help, we did do some additional analysis to really look at what we believe. It's going to be very difficult to determine what the additional workload would be, but just based on, we took a look at the current workload for the last year, and we're estimating between 25 and 30 additional hours, because what we're looking at is, it may not necessarily be just for applications, but the administrative help may increase some of the capacities that we have. So what I would say to council is, at least for the time being, we're estimating it's about 25 to 30 additional hours that we would need. And then, as we go through this, we will reevaluate it. There may be additional costs, but we believe, just looking at what we know from the past, that's probably what the cost would be.
A week?
Yes.
So you're thinking we can get by with one, maybe administrative type person? For not full time?
And again, we'll have to look at to see what's the best, what's the best kind of mix, whether the additional administrative support will create additional capacity for Elizabeth, or whether we need to get someone who does more sophisticated work. But we'll go through that process.
I appreciate it, but I respectfully question whether that, I mean, I've seen the workload, I've been, I was the liaison for three years. And I also think we have to think about the burden we're putting on the HPC. You know, they meet 11 times a year, I think, right? Not August? Oh, I looked at the agenda, I didn't think that there was a meeting scheduled once this summer. Anyway, you know, it's a lot to ask of our volunteers.
Mr. Simon, too?
What I wanted to just add, I'm not proposing any of these changes for tonight, but just to let the public know that we've been thinking about various issues and possibly how to address them. So one of them that was raised today in the public comment was the question of zoning. And there, with respect to zoning and this neighborhood, we actually had a couple of different efforts which dovetailed with each other, and are by no means complete. One was to look at farm-based zoning and just sort of how that would work, and the initial conclusion is that's a very long process to get right. It would take quite a bit of time, and please, if I mischaracterize any of this, Mayor and Councilwoman Kremmeler worked on that, so if I'm mischaracterizing it, please advise. But that, it's possible, and it would help define standards for the streetscape, et cetera, but it would take a lot of time to get right. Another possibility would be to modify the zoning in a more traditional sense, but be a little bit creative. So I, after brainstorming a little bit and talking with Mark and Mr. Solo, sent an outline of what that might look like. And it's by no means complete either, but just as an example, any new structure, if the floor area ratio rules today allowed it to be large, it would be capped at 1,800 square feet. And I don't know if that's the right number, but at some number, that is the right number to be proportional with the neighborhood. And on the other side, the same thing, many of the lots are actually too small under current zoning.
Wait, Patrick, I'm sorry to interrupt, just, what are you, are you?
What I'm trying to communicate to the public is that we have been thinking about not just the historic preservation aspect, but the larger question of how to solve the problems that the neighborhood is bringing to us, including zoning.
I mean, are you proposing zoning?
No, I'm simply, for the moment, I'm putting it out there. And the reason I'm putting it out there is because it hasn't been part of the public discussion, and if I could wave a wand and do this over again, I would have it be part of the discussion on an even footing with this. And it's not that way, and I'm not proposing we slow it down to make it that way, but I want to let people know that people are thinking about these problems, and that there are some potential creative solutions to them. The problems of undersized lots, the problems of, so.
It's not just for this neighborhood.
It's not, however, however, the, this, we are focused on this neighborhood as a high priority right now, and one of the, one of the things that frankly I think we should do is focus on the neighborhood, not try to boil the ocean and solve everything for the entire town all at once, because that is another formula for taking several years to get it done. So I simply wanted to let people know that that's, that that's out there and under discussion. We're not pulling it forward. With respect to the maintenance question that Councilwoman Butler raised, one of the topics which was bounced around and which has not gotten any traction in any of these discussions, so we haven't pushed on it, was to create a type III historic district, which would have less constraints on it. Basically, you would constrain demolitions and additions, but not have, not require for review most of the other things that are required because they are external facing. And that would, that would reduce, but not completely eliminate, the costs that were just described here, both for the residents in the neighborhood and for the town, and also the burden on the HPC. I haven't proposed that because people seem satisfied with the trade-offs that we're making at this point with the type II, and with the potential for increased costs and that impact. I think people are working out and are assessing it for themselves and believe it will be modest, and frankly, I don't know that any of us has enough expertise to know, for each of you individually, how it's going to turn out, so. But I do want to let people know that we have been brainstorming some of these issues and working on concerns over and above, and so there's some of these are things that if issues come up, or if you want to push us on the zoning, which frankly I think we should be working on. I said before, the existing zoning in that neighborhood is designed for redevelopment, it's just, it doesn't fit. So the historic preservation is the way we're addressing it right now, there are other ways we could do it as well.
Okay. All right, so just to wrap up, where we are, the ordinance has been introduced, we're going to be referring it to the planning board, that meeting will be on April 7th, is that correct, the Thursday? And we'll be bringing it back to council for a public hearing on April 11th. And I wanted to thank everybody who came out tonight and spoke, and who's been working on this issue to get us to this point. And there were, my brain is a little bit fried now, there were a lot of eloquent things said, especially at the last meeting, too, and I want to just echo what Leighton Newlin said in his comments a couple hours ago, which is that this is a really incredible neighborhood, and we want to respect both its past, its present, and its future. And I think our, all of our intention is to make sure that creating the historic district is going to help to achieve that. So with that, I did say at the beginning, we would continue public comment for anybody who would like to speak to anything that was not on the agenda, so, I think Mary left, but Kip, if you have something, you can come up. And then I also want to remind people that we're having another council meeting Monday night.
Well, I just wanted to comment on these notions about increased cost. I think for small repairs and that kind of thing, actually, the owner will benefit from the Historic Preservation Commission review and actually get free ideas. I've seen the process in the works, I've been involved in historic preservation since the early 1970s. So I really think you're exaggerating. As far as a major design, I would say that what Josh Cinderg just designed is going to be the same whether it's in a historic district or not. He's done a really good job, he's been very thoughtful, so I don't see where you're getting these ideas that it's going to cost people a lot of extra money. I think construction is expensive, yes, but you can do a lot of repairs for very little. And I think that you shouldn't try to scare people, quite frankly. Thank you.
Kip, I'm not trying to scare anyone, I own an old home, I know how it goes. I'm not trying to scare anyone.
That has nothing to do with a historic district, that has to do with older places that require repair, we all have to face up to that and do the best we can with it.
Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order.
Since you're on the topic of zoning, just to let you know, almost 10 years ago, I tried to address the issue of the zoning issues in what was the R4 district in this neighborhood. So it wasn't very successful then in terms of making significant changes in order to prevent what seemed to have been a strategy in the 50s to change the neighborhood, but I do appreciate that you're now looking at it seriously and that you'd give directive to the planning board to get it done. On that matter of zoning, there's another place where you may want to look, and that is Springdale Golf Club. That zoning is atrocious, I don't know why, I don't care about the whys, but it is zoned at 100 feet across the entire golf course without an FAR, and that will be disastrous.
I agree, Yaina.
Thank you.
And I think we should have our planner look at it.
Okay.
Moot, thank you.
I have one question on the sick leave ordinance that proposed. If the state, which the state eventually will probably have a sick leave ordinance, will that trump a local ordinance?
It depends how it's written, but most likely, yes.
Yeah, presumably it would be written to preempt.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So Moot?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.
[applause].